Okay, so when people get a
You know what? I'm gonna do my
Just do yours.
Yep, yep, yep.
Like response in or is that like last year? He just didn't respond.
Public hearing.
Hello, sir, how are you?
We really should respond, but what you need to do to make it right is let them have their four minutes. If they're done with their allocated time, then respond. If you feel there's something that you want to respond to, respond to.
But if they get their four minutes in.
What was with your daughter-in-law's balancing act thing that she did up?
Mickey Marge.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no time limit on you.
It's Mickey Marge.
I don't know any of that.
Yeah.
So if you, if they're, we gotta give them their time.
Heck no, I can barely stand on two feet, let alone like balance on one and then on a little, little bitty platform.
You should respond if you feel the need to.
Yeah, that was.
Are we okay with that? Okay, because they're really looking for some interchange in this important meeting. And so. Let me repeat that one more time.
Yeah, yeah.
What I just mentioned to, to end. In the public hearing, to the individual standing up. Let them sort of, if you feel compelled to want to provide a response to any questions or feelings that you're brought up.
Okay.
When they basically, you know, head back, they wanna stop their.
Okay.
If you wanna say something before we get to see the person, that's the team here.
Okay.
But if you try to, you want to, then then just.
Okay. And that is only because this is a public hearing, not a city council. So it's not a change in, in, in rules.
Hearing.
Hearing, okay.
So we don't have a public comment.
Right, right, okay. Well, hold on, which one of us actually owns a quarterback?
Not me.
Maybe I can use.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
As good as we can be. Snack it, how are you, Mayor? You've done too many of these.
You guys have to vote, so.
A lot of.
There are a difference that you're.
That's a lot of work you put in on that last one.
Yeah, that one's, uh, a little more interesting. Yeah, definitely a little more interesting.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Um, yeah, just August nineteenth. It is usually cool in here and it is really hot.
Did Brittany mention to, or ask you about the flow chart you had in your presentation? When I talked to her a few minutes ago.
Oh.
I was asking her, is that flow chart going to be presented?
Oh, I, I texted her to do it, I didn't hear back from her, but is that okay?
Yes, we'll just make sure she, she's ready for you because when you hit her needs, it's one of those.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, has a senior attorney want to, you know, talk about your story and that's a good. You know, take full advantage of the information that you.
Mayor, if you're needing a sub to do a flow chart, you just ask me next time.
You've got it down, huh?
Oh. No, I might have it down to eight hours, there's ten hours this time, but you give me a eight hours, I'll help you, okay?
Uh, flow tracks are almost fine.
The mayor was here, he covered ten, fifteen minutes, right? But you weren't right there, it was late at night. Although I'm sure you were away.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody out to the Roy City Council meeting for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. The time is now six P M. I'd like to recognize and welcome that we have Councilmember Paul with us tonight, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Saxton, Councilmember Skadden, and Councilmember Jackson. We appreciate you joining us tonight. I've asked Councilmember Skadden if he'll lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Randy?
Please join us in a moment of silence to honor Sergeant Lee Sorensen and Officer Eric Estrada, who were tragically killed in the line of duty on Sunday. During this time, we would also like to ask you that you hold in your thoughts and prayers Deputy Allred and his canine Azula, who are both injured responding to the same call and are now recovering. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, this is public comment period. Let me just make a distinction between the two. Tonight, we're gonna have also a public hearing. The focus of the public hearing, in fact, the statute is very clear, the only topic and the only discussion item tonight can be taxes, or in this case, the truth and taxation process. But public comments can be anything you want to talk about. We'll give you four minutes, just step up to the mic, give us your name and address. Just recognize that when we go into the public hearing, which will take place immediately after the public comment period, then what we will, that whole session and that whole conversation in the public hearing will simply be about truth and taxation. So kind of decide which way you'd like to go, but I'd encourage you, if you have issues dealing with the decision tonight about property tax increase, that maybe you hold that conversation and those comments to the, uh, to the public hearing and not the public comment period, that you get to choose. So with that, we're in a public comment period, please step up to the mic if you have something you'd like to say and just give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening, I'm Eddie Walter, I live at twenty-one fifty West, fifty-five seventy South. I'm the last dead end house over there. And I think I'd like you to try and figure out some way of alleviating the parking or trying to get down some of our narrow streets. I drive a one-ton truck and pull a camp trailer. In order to put it in my yard, I have to go down two thousand, cross fifty-five, turn up twenty-one fifty and back, all the way back down to the dead end to get it in my yard. Which isn't so bad if the streets aren't packed on both sides with parked cars. If they're packed, you can hardly turn safely on the streets up here. We don't have yard stretchers, so when you have some time, I'd like you to see what can be done to alleviate some of that kind of problem. We all want to park in front of our house, but if we do, we can't, some of us get into our house, so. If you put that on your list and take a look, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Name and address, please.
My name is Mary Lynn Jones, twenty-three fifty-nine West, fifty-seven fifty South, Roy. I am concerned about the makeup of Roy City. I don't think, I'm not criticizing anybody personally, but I think there needs to be an ordinance that yards are taken care of. If you drive down fifty-seven hundred South, there are boats that I am sure are being repaired at a home that are parked on lawns that have, they're just dirt. There are four or five houses down that road that are deplorable, and I feel bad for the people that live next to them. And they should, if we don't have an ordinance that says, you're already paying for your secondary water, so water your lawns and mow the lawn or the weeds, but I think we, it should be mandated that it has to be done. And it's not because people are trying to conserve water, they're lazy, and I'm, I'm not trying to be personal to anyone, but I'd be willing to go help somebody if they would say they would take care of it. But if we don't have an ordinance that says they need to maintain their lawns, and I've, I've got a list of addresses that I could give the compliance officer, but all he'd have to do is drive down twenty-one hundred West or twenty-two hundred West, and I'll bet there are fifty homes along those streets that need something done to them. And I'm tired of people saying, oh, you live in Roy? And I'm going, we've lived here fifty years, and we take pride in taking care of our property. And I don't know how you instill pride on other people, but it needs to be done because, and, and with businesses. Businesses should be required to take care of their park strips, to get the weeds out of it and to, to mow their lawn or, or to do something, but something needs to be done, and I'm, I'm sorry to complain, but I, I think it's awful.
Well, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Name and address, please.
Hi, yes, I'm Deanne Chasten, thirty-seven fifty-one West, fifty-five seventy-five South. Um, I've had a problem the last two city council meetings that I've come to. Um, and I thought it was just kind of weird when it happened, but when it happened a second time, I wanted to at least bring it to your attention. I got here late, like an hour late, and both sets of doors were locked. I could not get in to a public meeting because I was locked out. The only reason I could get in is because I texted somebody I knew was here who let me in. So it might be a timer issue because obviously it's after business hours, but you may want to look into your security system or whatever that is, so that people, even if they're coming the last ten minutes of the meeting, I believe they should be able to be let in. So I just had a concern about that.
Thank you, that's very important. Matt, take note of that one, because they really do have rights. In fact, you might, Michelle, would you mind just, we're past six o'clock, this is a public meeting, a very important, would you mind just checking to see if those doors are locked out there? I just don't want anybody who may be wanting to be here to be restricted. Thank you. Thank you. Please, name and address, please.
Brent Saxton, fifty-seven ten South, twenty-two fifty West. Roy resident for fifty years, I guess. I was on the city council two terms thirty years ago. We had an enforcement officer back then, Jack Siemens, who would go throughout the city and enforce city codes. There was one enforcement officer that was also during a building boom. He was enforcing building codes on all new construction with one officer. Today, we have an officer whose salary compares to the salary of the Park City Officer. He's paid more than the Salt Lake City Code Enforcement Officer, than the Ogden City Code Enforcement Officer, and we see no code enforcement. So we're talking about budget tonight, and we have a code enforcement officer making eighty thousand dollars a year. Maybe if we've got a tight budget, we need to look at what we are paying some of our department tax. Okay?
Okay, thank you for your input. Okay, name and address, please.
I'm Colleen Richards, forty-seven sixty-three South, twenty-nine hundred West and Roy, obviously. Um, a bunch of us are concerned about this property tax. I've been in Roy for thirteen years, and my property taxes went up every year. I want to know what you guys are gonna do to help us get our property tax down, because you know what? You're raising our property tax, makes our house payment go up. When I first started living in Roy, my house payment was twelve hundred dollars, it's seventeen hundred now. I want to know what you guys are gonna do to bring businesses into this comp, into this city and stop putting so much residential in here. We're, we're capped. I mean, think about the sewer system, think about all of the water. I mean, what are you guys gonna do? We're all just tired of it. I mean, it's ridiculous. I think that we have to balance our budget, y'all need to balance your budget as well. I believe that the first responders should be making more money. I do believe that because they put their lines on the life, on their, their li, their life on, you know, in danger every day. But when y'all start saying you need raises, what about the rest of us? You know, we can't afford to go to the grocery store and, you go to the grocery store and you can't even get a basket full of groceries because it's a hundred dollars or more. So why don't you guys think about your budget? You know, I, I just think it's ridiculous that you guys have to keep raising our taxes, so anyway, that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to share a thought during public comments? Okay, yeah, please, if you'd like, please come up and just give us your name and address, please.
Name's Roger Wardley, two oh three five West, four two five South, Roy. What's your addresses, by the way?
Can you get closer to the mic? We can't, we can't quite hear you.
Yeah, just speak a little closer to the mic.
Where do you guys live? I don't know your addresses, seems a little slanted. Where's your address?
Okay, let me, let me make sure we understand what public comment period is, you're four minutes. We do not want to take away from you, so ask anything, share anything.
Sure. Okay, just for fun. Average guy, a regular retired thing, because I've been here for, basically since sixty-one. Retirement turns out to be not a ton of money, but I get like two and a half percent here, two and a half there, which turns out to be a hundred dollars in my pocket over the year. If you guys take the hundred, I guess it's nice that maybe nobody else, no groceries or no other state entities or whatever, wants theirs, but yeah, I kind of want to settle it down. Can you guys trim some costs? That's what I have to do. Can you do the same thing, maybe? Well, you know, it seems straightforward. I don't just get to write bigger numbers in my checkbook and say, oh, that's good, I'm cool. So everyone, everyone's in the same boat. Can you hold up your end a little better, please? I looked at, tried looking for some prices or wages on people. It's like you got like fifty-seven pages of sixty employees each for the year, that's over three thousand. Did you really have that many that we've hired and gone through? Do we need three thousand employees for the little city of Roy? Maybe the year, maybe your data's inconclusive on your website, I don't know, but that seems like a lot. Anyway, notice your wage was not very high, which is surprising, but hey. Anyway, yeah, thanks, it's just like adds up year after year. Got a big raise a couple of years ago and, yeah, well, insurance took all of that, you know, they can't avoid. It ain't getting better. Appreciate if you guys could like help out, particularly the guys that play the, that pay the property tax, that have been supporting and stable citizens, you know, those are kind of the ones you seem, you would think that you would want. So make it easy on us if you can. Thanks for your listening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Please, name and address, please.
Name's Kenny Milner, thirty-seven oh five West, fifty-seven hundred South, right next to Sophie and Joe. Um, I'm gonna rehash the whole fifty-seven hundred speeding issue. I know we got the speed hump there, which does absolutely nothing. I sit in my front porch and watch people jump it. It's really interesting to watch how many people have bad shocks on their car when they bounce down the road after going over it at, you know, thirty-five miles an hour, forty miles an hour. Um, obviously, I'm not a, a radar detector, I can't see how fast they're going, but I know above twenty-five and, and people are flying down that street. I got kids, other people got kids. And somebody's gonna get hurt. Uh, I know when, when we first brought this up, you put a couple of, you know, different options in there, and I guess people complained or whatever, but they need to slow down. And if they can't slow down, someone's gonna get hurt. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, name and address, please.
Uh, Brock Evans, forty-nine ten South, twenty-two seventy-five West, or Utah, and then. So I just kind of wanted to talk about, well, thank you guys for what you do to begin with. I'm sure you're working hard to figure out what the right solution is and, uh, just coming across this property tax. Um, I'm a young fella, I'm just trying to figure out life, you know? Um, and honestly, this is like, holy cow. Like, to me, twenty-five years old, trying to get through life, and I'm thinking about the future, and I'm like, holy cow, like, life's already expensive, and these property taxes are gonna kick us in the butt. I am not, personally, if something happened to my wife and she wasn't working, I wouldn't, I, yeah, I wouldn't be making it. And even with as good as paying as I am, because I'm working my butt off, it's just not, I feel like it's just not gonna be enough. I just don't see how people are gonna figure this out. I get there's those lazy individuals who, you know, they're, they don't want to work and they expect money, but I'm working my butt off, and I'm not seeing, it's just getting worse and worse. Things are just getting more expensive and it's just getting harder. And so when this property debt tax came up, my, honestly, I was talking to my neighbor about it and I was just like, because he's the one who told me, and I was like, last year it went up, what, eighteen percent already? And this year it's at twenty-seven, and, or twenty-eight, am I correct? Right? Yeah, and so I just think, I don't know. I'm just trying to do my research. I don't, I just, kind of where I don't understand is where is this money going? Um, from what I've got told, it's going to employment, like, to employees, which I understand if, sev, like, there was a seven percent raise in the last year to employees that this was going to. I'm not sure if that's correct. I, I don't know, heard, heard that from a source, I don't know if it's true, but I'm just trying to keep my, my ears open to where this is going. So I guess where I'm trying to understand is, yeah, like, can we see where this is going? That's, that's my frustration, because I'm not seeing any new schools, I'm not seeing, I don't know. I just don't know any, even where to start, I guess, is my point. Any feedback?
I, I don't want to take away from your moment, so when you're done, I'll try to provide a little clarity, but you have a minute, so finish whatever you want to say to us.
Yeah, and I, I, he brought the thought, um, what was it, fifty-seven hundred, the speeding? Holy cow, even going down my street across from the seminary building, it's ridiculous. It's like, there's a speed bump going west and, uh, but not going south and north on, on forty-nine hundred. And it's pretty, uh, it's pretty bad. I'm seeing cars going sixty, seventy on a twenty-five. Um, this has happened quite a few times. I've, me and my neighbors have also talked about this, and I've called the cops a few times. I just set up cameras, so I'm hoping I can catch them on camera, but it's pretty dangerous out there, the way people are speeding. So I just say, if we can keep our town safe, and I do appreciate the officers who are keeping us safe. It's, they can't guard everywhere at once, they're doing their job best as they can, I'm sure. But if there's something we can do about that, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to share a thought? Name and address, please.
Uh, Alex Rhodes, twenty-four forty West, forty-nine hundred South. My concerns with an increase in property tax is, as the gentleman before me just said, it keeps continuously rising. There's no clarity on where any of it is going. I know a lot of it goes to a snow removal budget, which absolutely isn't needed to keep increasing. We haven't had a good snowfall like we used to in the last twenty years. It is completely unnecessary. I have family in Wyoming, they have in Evanston, bigger square footprint than in Roy with less workers, and they maintain it way better. The other concern is we're constantly doing all these roadwork repairs on the main roadways, but it's not necessary if it was done right the first time. They, you can take I fifteen, for instance, they've moved it five times in the last four years, instead of just doing it right the first time. We've now on forty-four hundred South, down by the roundabouts, they've now tore those out three times in the last five years. It's completely unnecessary to keep doing, in my opinion, there was nothing wrong with them before. They're not expanding them anymore. They just tore them out, doing whatever repairs they needed to, which they would have discovered the first go-around if they'd actually done their job. I do agree, the law enforcement and firefighters do need a raise, but that's about as far as it goes. Most everybody else doesn't, or, I mean, according to the budget, there's no reason anybody needs to get a raise other than those people. I know plenty of people in the firefighter service, yeah, they don't get paid enough, but that's kind of what they knew going into it for the most part. But, mm, like, as you guys, I don't know what your guys' wages are, but if any of it is going to increase your guys', guys' wages, that is completely unnecessary and unneeded. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to share a thought? Public comments. Okay, name and address, please.
Brent Strong, twenty-six sixty-one West, forty-six fifty South. This is my little guy Jason here, he was hit by a car a couple of months ago. And I'm for the, um, increase, actually, because I think these guys along the back wall don't get paid enough, for sure. I've seen you guys already fix the light where he was hit on forty-four hundred South, nineteen hundred West. And I thought that was awesome, wish it would have been before, but anyway, I'm definitely for the increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions, please? Okay. We're gonna come out of public comment period, and I'm just gonna try to see if I can't provide a little bit of clarification to some of the comments that were made. Just for the record, none of the city council received a COLA increase this year. In fact, the council has never received a COLA increase all the time I've been elected office. And so we make sure, uh, that's almost one of the very first things, and that decision was made in January as we started this budget process, just like it has all the years that we've basically done. So COLA, cost of living allowance to council members, does not happen. It does not happen. Second, uh, I'm not familiar with the roundabout issues on forty-four, I, I guess I need to understand that better, but trust me, there is a significant improvement taking place on the bridge that's going to the roundabouts, going into But trust me, there is a significant improvement taking place on the bridge that's going to the roundabouts, going into Riverdale. UDOT and Riverdale specifically have under contract to literally remove that bridge and replace it. So we're gonna have some disruptions over on forty-four hundred in terms as they get through that process. The alternative unfortunately was, keep it open and extend it six to eight months, or shut it down. And for the most part, shut it down and get it done within six, eight weeks. So it's in process. You'll see, if you haven't seen already, some, some changes there. UDOT manages all of the interstates, and it manages nineteen hundred west, thirty-five hundred west, and fifty-six hundred south. All roads, those roads are UDOT roads. So we now have to work with UDOT, the state, in terms of any improvements need to be made. I will indicate to you, as sad as the story was on forty-four hundred with that young child, and thank you for sharing that. We are glad that he's doing well. It certainly could've been a lot worse. But when we first heard about that, as we've seen unfortunately, a few cases in Roy where people have run stop signs and they've run, um, street lights, I mean, it's just, it's incredible what's happened. A lot of people who were sitting in crosswalks got injured. And, and thank God for our, our paramedic teams and our, our fire department teams and our, certainly our police officers who respond very quickly to try to, you know, mitigate the damage and, and bring rescue to, to those who caught up. When we notified UDOT of the problem, they moved out. We're hoping that the changes they made on forty-four hundred, as they made other changes within the city, are gonna make a difference. But we'll keep working those. And I feel bad, honestly, that sometimes we don't react until there's some tragedy that occurs. And, and that certainly is not how we should be. As far as code enforcement, and this is important, this is a public comment period. If there are issues with a particular property, please send the issue to the city. Notify the city. There's a way you can do it on the city website. It says, I got a problem with this property. You need to take a look. It's through those actions that the code enforcement officer is getting out there and putting their eyeball on it. We have directed many properties that we believe, both public, excuse me, both private as well as businesses, to get their arms around some of the challenges we're facing. And there are challenges, but it's important just to recognize that you, we need your help. You live in your neighborhoods. And if there's a property that has some concerns, and you feel it needs to have somebody put their eyeballs on it, then send us the information. Let us know where the problem is, so that we can take action to resolve it. Okay. We're gonna go into an action item, which is the public hearing portion of this meeting. Specifically, it's dealing with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget for the Roy City Corporation. It's considered resolution twenty-five twenty-four, and it deals with the consideration of proposed addition of a hundred, excuse me, one point four million dollars in property tax for employee wages and revenue replacements and approval of a resolution of the Roy City Council adopting the final annual budget for the fiscal year commencing one July of twenty-twenty-five until ending thirty June of twenty-twenty-six. The key element tonight would be is to set the property tax rate. It has to be a certified rate. Now, I will tell you, the council approved the budget, the portion that needed to be approved in order for us to keep going as we went from July first to where we are today. But the certified tax rate was one of the last things that needs to be worked through. That is what this tax and truth in taxation portion of this meeting is all about. And, and what they have a choice to decide tonight is since they set the ceiling at twenty-eight percent, they can approve it anywhere from zero to twenty-eight percent. They just cannot go over that twenty-eight percent target. And so the discussion tonight is gonna be focused on that. I'm gonna go into a motion for public hearing, and I'm asking if you have a comment you would like to make formally in the public hearing on the truth in taxation. We only ask that you give us your name and your number or your address. And key would be, is try to keep the conversation directed to the truth in taxation. That's where we wanna focus this hearing. But before we do that, we're gonna ask Amber to basically, if she would, take a few minutes and just simply kinda give us a little introduction to this, this resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. And then we've got a couple of presentations and information we wanna share. Amber?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight to adopt the final fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget and adopt the twenty-twenty-five certified tax rate. A tentative budget was approved June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. The city has followed all truth in taxation requirements to approve a possible twenty-eight percent property tax increase, which would add one million four hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars to the general fund budget for revenue decreases and employee wages. A twenty-eight percent property tax increase would increase the average Roy residents a hundred and eight dollars, ten, a hundred and eight dollars and ten cents per year, or nine dollars and one cent per month. During the budget process last year, we cut approximately six hundred thousand from operating budgets. We were able to retain eighty-five percent of those cuts from the current budget, only adding back in what was determined to be essential. In addition to this, we cut two positions from the budget, including the part-time victim advocate position and the part-time code enforcement officer. Any changes to the current proposed budget can be added by resolution to be made part of the final budget. A final budget must be adopted tonight. We recommend that you receive public input and consider approval of resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, Council, here's what I'd ask you, if you go through this particular phase of the process. Certainly Amber may have some comments or you have for her. I would ask, we wait for after the public hearing, for asking her, get some more information from her. And certainly from the presentation and the information we're gonna share with you, Council, as well as the public, relative to some important things. I'd like to lead out with some introductions. I have some charts that will be placed on there. Council, you've seen those. They're in the packet. We've asked that Councilmember Saxton, he has a worksheet that he would like to discuss. We're gonna put his, allow him some time to share his thoughts. And then we have option two, I refer to it, that Diane and Randy have in terms of working through this process. I'd ask that we ask no comments, no questions, anything. Allow us then to absorb it, take good notes, Council. And then I wanna go into a public hearing. Once I go into a public hearing, get also take in all of the public hearing inputs on this topic. And then once we're done, once we're done with all of that, you've got public input, you've got the information, please, then Council, it's time for us to interchange and try to provide you answers to questions. Get your ideas before I go for a formal vote. Are we okay with all that? Okay. So with that, I'm just gonna go real quickly then with some charts. And if you'll bear with me with this, I wanna just kinda walk through a little bit with, with you, as well as the public as it relates to some important information that we have relative to this process. You can look at that particular chart, Council, and it's in your packet that's available to you. It basically simply shows how our revenue is generated, and more importantly, how our money is being spent. As you notice in the charts, a little small, but the packet's pretty clear. Roughly in taxes, we're generating or projected generate about seventeen million dollars in taxes. And, and with that, about eighteen million dollars is projected in terms of expenditures on personnel requirements. The charts are pretty clear. Next chart. In building, in terms of the funds that we have within the general fund, and by the way, property tax, as you will know, Council, goes into the general fund. It does not go into the other funds that we operate under, and I'll share just a little bit about some of, some of those are. The focus tonight is the property tax that will go into the general fund. In fact, that's where property tax goes. Let me just talk about the sales and use taxes. Sales and use taxes the city generates is the largest revenue that this city gets. The city has little control over taxes. Sales tax and use tax is what people spend and what they buy, and certainly what they purchase. The only thing the city council can honestly do is create an environment by which we can bring more businesses, type businesses into the city, but you have little control over that. The distribution is under the fifty-fifty rule. And as you've heard me say before, and I'll share it with one more time, when a person makes a purchase in Roy City, just like they make a purchase virtually in every city, fifty percent of the sales tax that is generated for the city comes from that point-of-view sale. Meaning, if you walked into Harman's and you purchased an item in Harman's, whatever portion of the sales tax that normally you will be charged for that purchase, our portion, fifty percent of that portion, will come to the city. But the other fifty percent of the total sales tax coming into the city comes in based on population. Let me repeat that, by population. In twenty-nineteen, Roy City was the twentieth-largest city in Utah by population. Today, we're about twenty-fifth. We're actually getting smaller in terms of where our standing is by population. So as the state looks at all the population with all the cities within the state, they distribute the other fifty percent of the sales tax that is generated. It distributes it based on population. The second-largest tax revenue the city gets is through property tax. As you know, the Roy City Council has full control of the property tax rate with some limitations. Now, there's also some franchise taxes that we get from energy, telephones. I will indicate to you, like most of you, I suspect, in this, in this room, we fundamentally got rid of our landline phone a long time ago. Roy City is not picking up taxes on my home phone at that location anymore. Just where things are at. There's certainly some local, what they call summary county options, transit tax. Whether you agree with it or not, we actually pick up some tax based on the liquor store that Roy City has in our, in our midst. And we'll pick up probably a little bit more as a result of the brand-new liquor store that's going in on fifty-five hundred as I speak. And although we have requested a transit room revenue tax for all hotels in Roy, that has not materialized yet and still working that. Chart. There are other funds that we have, capital improvement project funds, water and sewer utility fund, or enterprise funds. There's a variety of other pieces to our budget, but just recognize they exist. It's not just the sales tax and the property tax that's driving the revenue to pay for things. There are other funds that we use, but the focus tonight is simply gonna be on the general fund. And the general fund is driven primarily by sales tax and property tax. Chart. Just so you kinda have a better feel, if you can see this chart, I think it's significant you know this. In the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-four, not just a few weeks ago, Roy City actually gross taxable sales and purchases in three months was a hundred and forty-five million dollars. That's the highest it's ever been, highest, and we will get our portion of that sales tax for all those purchases. But I wanna have you draw your attention to the right side. That is the population as is recorded within the state. As you can tell, from twenty, two thousand nineteen to twenty-twenty, our population numbers are not growing, they're shrinking. And so the trend line for population is going down. And when you add the increased amount of sales that are happening in Roy City, and we thank you so much, whether you're going to the stores or whether you're ordering that out of your house and delivering it to your house, Roy City gets its share of that property or that sales tax. But you don't have to go too far to see where our population is going, and that's the problem. Let me make this a little bit clearer to you based on the bottom chart on the right-hand side. Roy received in twenty-four, the gross taxable sales total for the entire year was five hundred and thirty-four million dollars worth of sales. Riverdale, which you know is a big commercial base, Riverdale had one point one million, excuse me, one point one billion sales in their city. Our population is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five. Riverdale city's population was nine thousand one hundred and sixty. When they gave us our portion, and we get it on a monthly basis, our portion of the sales tax revenue, Roy City in twenty-twenty-four received eight million three hundred thousand dollars in proper, in sales tax revenue. And Riverdale received six million seven hundred thousand. Roy City made more money on sales tax revenue than Riverdale. And not because they didn't outsell us. We got all that extra money because of our population, when they did the population split. It's important you understand how this process works, where our money comes from. You can't find a better example than that. Chart. So what does that mean? It simply means Roy City's sales tax revenue has flatlined. It's not growing. Hasn't grown for a long, long time. Council, you know, I have been sending you these charts for quite a few years now. Basically saying is, our revenue is in trouble. It's not that you're not buying. It's not that people are not buying in Roy. It's the fact is, is that there's counties and cities in southern Utah, particularly around Utah County, that are growing like weeds. And as they grow, they're sucking away a lot of our portion of the sales tax revenue that normally would've come to Roy City. In fact, most of the cities in Weaver County. Chart. When you go into this chart, you'll basically see where the sales tax revenue just validates what I just told you. This is the actual expressed in thousands of what we in fact have generated in revenue. This comes from the twenty-twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report. That report is done by an independent auditor, and they're the ones that basically track and make sure that we're compliant with all of our budgeting requirements. It becomes pretty evident by this chart, and I just pulled this off of the latest chart we have. It goes back a lot of years. It tells you very clearly what's happening in terms of our major revenue sources coming into the city. Chart. So here's the challenge, and it's not an easy one. With sales and use tax revenue flatlined, the city has few options to continue providing high-quality services. To keep up with inflationary costs and needed employee retention salaries, the choices are simple. Cut spending. And I'll be very blunt with you. Cut spending means cutting services and cutting people. We cannot cut anymore. That's just where it is. Increase commercial and residential developments. I can't tell you how we get a lot of pushback when we look at options in terms of creating more revenue. And revenue can come to us by commercial means, or revenue can come to us by developing new residential units. And we get a lot more revenue. But you don't have to go back too many years when a decision was made by Roy City, wasn't with this administration and certainly without this Council. When a recommendation was made to put a Home Depot down on, down on fifty-six hundred, and the outcry that came from the public to the city to not allow that to happen, that is one of many reasons that put us in this particular situation. Had that Home Depot went in there, and we could've generated the revenue that only Home Depots and Lowe's and those other type of businesses can, it certainly would've helped us. But the public spoke, and the Council listened. And it takes time. It takes time to do this. There are property owner rights, and the rights of the people who own the property have a right to decide what they wanna put on it. And there's also construction timelines. Even developments that are being proposed and considered today will never get to full fruition probably for two to three years. And we don't help to get any benefit from that property until it's completed. And of course, the benefits are clear. Increase sales tax, increase in new property tax revenues. And then we face, when we got these mounting bills, we face the last option, which the Council have, and that is to consider increasing property tax. Which is why you're here, most of you. which is why you're here, most of you, and the reason why we're having this meeting. Now, what we have done, chart? City council has met four times on this topic. The city manager and I talked about this even before we got into this year. And we both agreed we needed to start the dialogue, knowing what was coming. We seen it coming. And we began the dialogue. And if you look through those things, we looked at a lot of options. We looked at a lot of things trying to find a solution that's going to help. The things that were bolded in this particular chart will give you an idea of what the council settled on in terms of the way ahead. But as you can look at some of the things that we're looking at, this was tedious, it was difficult, it was necessary. Chart. So let's get to the bare bones. One of the items we talked about was fund balance. You're going to hear a little different presentation in a few minutes about these totals. But as I went in and looked at the annual comprehensive financial report, I pulled from that document the numbers you're seeing. In our Roy City Fund Balance Reserve, this is money that is set aside that is in fact available for some cases, very specific purposes. The total number as we exited on the first of July, 2024, excuse me, 2024, we had twenty million, six hundred and thirty-two, twenty million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in reserve for us to allocate. And if you notice, that's a pretty healthy amount of money and it's been building. But I also want you to notice what we can spend on and what we can't. And of all of that money that's out there, only 4.7 million of that, according to this chart, is in fact allowed the city manager and the city council to spend in terms of what we've unassigned on things. And some of those things can honestly be to pay for employees' wages. The rest of it is restricted in some fashion or form. And they hold us very clear in terms of what we can and cannot do by law with that money. Bottom line is, there's the numbers. I think you're going to see a little bit of different information shortly about this as well. Chart. So what happened? And how did we get this far? We looked at full-time employees. And it does, you don't have to go too far to see what is happening. In the '23 to '24 period, we went up 11 employees. It cost us money to hire those new employees. In 2022, we passed a resolution, 22-1, that also put a pretty healthy dent addition to the cost of personnel. It's all there, it's all on public record. You can pull the information if you want, I'll leave it up to you. But the bottom line would be is, there's the history, there's where we are. Chart. So in that budget, if you took time to read the budget, the city manager was absolutely clear. He says, we're bleeding. He says, and all his team members adding to it, simply says, we are bleeding specifically in fire, specifically in public works. They're losing people. Why? Well, to be very blunt with you, and we had a pretty healthy research, we provided the council in terms and a public meeting, if you pulled the charts from our last meeting, which took place last August or first of this month, I will tell you, it's because both in our general employee merit system, it just isn't right, it's got to be fixed. And I think, I don't know how we can compete, to be honest with you, with some cities in our neighborhood for our public safety. I don't know how we can compete. The bottom line is, two-thirds of the firefighters and police officers don't pay social security tax in their city. The city doesn't pay 6.2 of that 12.4 percent and the employee doesn't pay. And yet they generate the revenue. That's 12.4 percent of what we in this city have to pay, they don't pay. And they can certainly redirect that money to help improve salaries. It's very hard, it makes it very difficult to compete. So we got to change. But the most important thing I'm driving here on this conversation is the fact we got to stop the bleeding. We're losing too many talented people to other cities because they can offer 50 cents an hour more. And you don't have to go too far, and I've showed the information in the last meeting, where that's happening. So if you really, if we're going to fix this and fix it in a way that's going to make a difference, then the bottom line would be is, then we got to go to those individuals that are in the steps one through six. Let me repeat that, one through six. And we got to fix those salaries. I'm less concerned about those who are step seven all the way up to 12 or step seven all the way to 18. They certainly need some level of compensation. But we're not losing a lot of people at that level. We're getting people in the city and employment in critical positions that within just a couple of years working here can find it better and get more money somewhere else. So what does Roy City do? It trains them, sends them to school, gets them certified, only to have some city right next to us simply says, we'll take them from you because we can give them 25, 50 percent more an hour. That nonsense has to stop. Chart. So I give some recommendations. And I give the council some recommendations by which we can move through this. But if we're going to fix the bleeding and stop the problems, then we've got to have a serious, no kidding, relook in terms of how we're paying our employees. Many of you just a few minutes ago stood up and says, we need to take care of our employees. Absolutely true. But if we're going to do that, then we better change the system that we're using today because it's flawed. And the only people that can fix this and make it permanent is the people sitting at this particular council. They're the only ones. There's the recommendation. Last but not least, chart. To the comment that says, what's going on? In the 2015 to 2016, we took a 37 percent property tax increase. I was here, many of you were as well. In the '22 to '23, we took a 10 percent. In the '23 to '24, we took 11.26 percent. And now we're facing anywhere, in my opinion, from 8.77 percent to 28 percent property tax increase. That's the reality we face tonight. It was said in a workshop meeting in February that what we're experiencing is normal. It's okay, we do this all the time. Counsel, I am telling you, it is not normal. Never have I ever seen back to back to back two-digit property tax increases in Roy City. And yet we are facing that tonight. To balance the budget and what was proposed by the city manager, the council, and that was delivered to us on May 1st, we need an 8.77 percent property tax increase and the budget is balanced. We can get into the details of how much that is, but that's what is needed to balance the budget. We're looking, and you're going to hear some other options in terms of what else we can possibly do. What's next is the 26, physically your 26 budget has to be approved tonight. You can sit here until we get a vote, how long it takes, but I cannot release this council until a vote is taken and we get a budget approved. I need, excuse me, Amber needs a certified rate from this meeting tonight. We just need to work through some options. So with that, I wanted to give you a little introduction, certainly my own commentary. And now what I'd like to do is, I think I want to turn some time, and I'm going to do two things tonight. I want to turn some time to Councilmember Saxton. He has an option he would like to present to you and the council for your consideration.
Simple math, I call it 101. Simple math, I call it 101. I'm, I'm going to give you a two-fold scenario. First one is those that have writing utensils, please write down this phone number, 801-399-8489. And that is the number to receive tax abatements from the county. I'll explain what the process is and who is eligible. And then I'll jump to my next conclusion. First of all, the abatements go to those who are 66 years of age or older who have an income of 42, 643 in 2025 and have less than $11,100 in savings, checking, CDs, money market, IRA, which leaves little really considering the life expectancy of a female in Utah is 82 while a male is 78. It doesn't leave them much wiggle room in their budget. The reason I'm pointing this out is because I looked up what is in the city's general fund reserve. It's actually closer to 26.1 million for all funds. That's 24 numbers. Of that, 4.7 million is in the general fund. What I am proposing we do is we take $250,000 in general fund reserves and apply them to the 8.77 tax rate and cut it in half to 4.75 for the public. That's what I'm proposing. That's the, I think people are going to say, we don't like to use the reserves. And I understand that. But this is an emergency and you've got over 26 million in reserves. I don't understand why the city shouldn't be reaching in its own reserve pocket and not reaching or not reaching in their own and reaching into the public. I don't get that, I don't understand it. And we can do that. Anyway, that's my option, that's my alternative to what's been proposed. I hope you'll give it a thought, counsel, I really do. Because there's a lot of people, not only the ones that have spoke tonight, but there's others that are really hurting. And a 28, wow, that's just, that's a lot. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Brian, okay. I'm referring that to option one. We now have an option two, and I'm going to turn some time over to Diane and Randy if they'll go ahead and kind of give us their idea on another option. Diane, Randy?
Thank you, mayor. In fact, I would like to thank you extensively for the amount of work that you have done and we have done this year. We have had work sessions like never before in the budget because we know it's been such a critical issue. And we have scoured and worked hard. And just recommending that we have this worksheet to present has been very helpful and I appreciate that. So I'll just jump right in. Randy and I have tried to go through some options that might help some of these concerns that we have. A little bit of the background is certainly the city budget is concerning. Wages are outpacing city revenues. And the fundamental principles are we increase revenue or we cut services. And that's been brought to attention. And I think that's the, that's the key point here. It has to be, you have to do one or the other. It's, you have to cut or you have to increase. There are four basic steps. In fact, if you picked up a handout, just so it would be easier for you, there is a handout that is attached, it's got a flow chart on the back and it has the other information, just if it helps you with numbers because sometimes that is hard as we're going through different numbers. So I think the first step is for us as citizens to consider, what do we want? What level of services, what quality? Then the second is, how much does what we want cost? And then the third is, how much are we willing to pay for what we want? Does that mean we have to change what we want? And then the fourth step is, if we're not willing to pay that product cost, how much are we willing? And then we're going to have to accept what that product is, we're going to have to accept that cut in services. And so the next steps are, how do we come up with revenue? And the mayor has outlined that very well. The only control we have is really over property taxes and the rainy day fund. And for our study, Randy and I, and I believe some other people, feel that the best business practices state that rainy day funds should be for urgent, emergent, one-time expenses, not ongoing expenses. The land sale money would meet rainy day fund criteria because it is a one-time money. And if we by chance use that one-time money of $560,000 now and we use it to raise wages, which we really need, next year we now have a bill due, $560,000, which will equate to an 11 percent tax increase next year. And because we feel that it's not appropriate to use, you know, you know, certainly it's urgent, but I don't believe that we're in the emergent state yet and that we should get ourselves into that sort of a bind, kicking that can or kicking that increase down the road to next year, to next year's council. There will already be problems that we can anticipate. We certainly don't want to add problems we can anticipate. There are differing opinions, as mentioned, you know, in regards to that one-time use. We do have some future revenues that are looking promising, but probably two or three years at the earliest. So we need to pace ourselves, we need to be very careful. Now, in accordance with our firm belief that one-time monies, such as the sale of the land, should only be used for the catastrophic, emergent, urgent uses, we did go through the budget line by line and there are $100,000 worth of urgent, one-time expenses that we must do. And Randy and I felt that that was very appropriate to use the money for that. And that's helpful because that equates to a 2 percent tax increase, which we can now put towards wages. Now, with respect to our best data, now, we have had some benchmark salary and we don't have it all fine-tuned exactly. But with respect to that, it reflects an average wage in the city is 14 percent below the median, now not the top, but the median wage of nearby comparable cities. Now, if we recall, the median wage is the point where half of the workers earn more and half earn less. And what that means then is we are 14 percent below that median point. And that is what is leading us to this very difficult 70 percent turnover rate in the last three years for public works and for the fire department. One piece of very strong evidence in regards to the salary survey concerns is we are living in a real-world salary survey. With that, when you have a 70 percent staff turnover in the last three years, you know that we're in quite significant challenges. Now, we have already had many cuts in the budget and Amber has brought up some of these cuts, which we appreciate. We know that our department heads have We know that our department heads have kept their budgets very low. 7.5% cut last year and almost that this year. But we need to remember that sometimes cuts cost more than is saved in regards of loss of critical experience of our staff, overtime, contracted services. So we have to be careful on cuts, even though on one hand it may look like we're saving some, oftentimes we're actually spending more. The only way to cut more, as the mayor mentioned, is to cut staff or programs. One thing I want to bring up, which I am very, very pleased about, is that Chief Williams of our Fire Department is willing to use the funding of two of his positions towards wage correction in that department. And that shows the dedication that we have amongst our Fire, that they're able to find that, you know? Maybe not everyone's able to do that, but we really appreciate that effort and willingness on their part. And we also believe that it would be very important that other departments should be allowed and encouraged to do likewise, if it's possible for them. This, of course, would all be on condition that it must be overseen by the city manager to make sure it's feasible for the department, but this would definitely be something that could be very beneficial because they are right there. They're very close to what can possibly be adjusted in that regards. If anyone looked at the agenda packet, Amber took several different options. It included different tax rates. It included use of the land money, sell, land sale money, or no use of it, as well as different COLA amounts. If you take a look at the flow chart, we've done just a small snippet of that, and we can go over that in just a moment. But what I'd like us to do, and you as citizens, because we are looking forward to your input, please start with the end in mind and then determine, how do we get there? It's easy to say we want top-quality services, but we must be willing to pay for it, and we must be willing to pay for it now and soon. We do have a lot of work we need to do eventually. We need to look at the points that the mayor has brought up that, however, probably, we know it can't be done until next year, but we have to stop the bleeding a little bit while our patient is going under, undergoing specific testing so we can figure out what the long-term solution is. We've got to keep our patients alive. That's our staff. And give them at least some relief in the wage situation. You know, we have different...the citizen preferences are certainly a priority, and as I mentioned, we ask for your input. One thing I wanted to bring up is that current city services for the average home are about a dollar a day. If we went to the top, that would be a 28% tax increase. It would cost approximately 28 to 30 cents more a day, which, as Amber mentioned, is $108 per year. Now, if we go down from 28% by 1%, that is about $3.65 a year per household. Now, if you live in that household yourself, that would be for you as one person. But a lot of households have four people or more. That brings it down to even less than a dollar a year. But if we could put that money together, that would give us $150,000 to go towards the wages of our staff who are so loyal and help us so much. So every percent is a big difference for our wages. What is the minimum amount of wage relief we must adopt now to stop that bleeding, to keep our staff here, to keep our employees in this environment that they tell us they enjoy? We must answer that question today. I have had some input from different citizens of other things that they would be willing to cut. One of the inputs and texts and emails has included things like cutting the Christmas lights on 1900 West, cutting the fireworks at Roy Days, that's about $25,000. Maybe seeing if there's a way to have less winter staff. They said that the salmon bake is great, but we need more donations and volunteers, or if we can't make it cut, you know, if we can't make it break even better, maybe we need to cut it. A proposal has been used to cut $50,000 from the Roy Days budget. These are definitely things that we need to consider. They all have a risk-benefit ratio, which we need to decide. So if you can go to that flow chart, I just wanted to try to make it as simple as possible. The first question is, citizens are willing to pay for current level of services? And then it should flow quite easily. If that's a no, then we have to make a decision. Are we willing to use the 560,000 one-time land sale? If that's a no, then right there, just cover Merit and COLA. We are already at a 20% tax increase. If the citizens are willing to pay extra for the current level of services, then we have no option. We must increase our wages. Then again, is it okay to use that one-time land sale money? We have some opinions here that it is okay, Randy and I. That's not our opinion. We feel that it should only be used for emergent, one-time search uses. So that would take us over to either no, we don't believe we should use one time, or we could do partial. And that partial would be including that $100,000 of urgent one-time, and that would give us a very nice, extra little bonus. If you take a look down to the very bottom small graph, it tells you that if we do the full 28% tax increase that has been proposed, but we use a couple of different COLA ratios, it lets you know how 1% COLA shifted into the wage may be more advantageous for us because right now wages really do need a boost. And so not something that we would want to do on a long-term basis, but right now, that's really where we need to help. And if that's the case, we could actually have, and this is kind of the tricky part, it's 40% of the median wage correction. So 40% of 14%, I know, that gets a little weird, 40% of 14%, that gets us at about, you know, 6%. And then it goes down. If we do 23%, we would get about a quarter of that 14%. So it would be like 3.5% wage and/or, you know, 25%, 9%. If you look in that other chart, it's got it outlined for all of those. So that's, I think, a really important part there. I just think that if you can look through it and simplify it, know what your end product is that you're wanting, and then realizing what criteria you're going to allow, we have to do something. And I just believe that we just have to make some hard decisions. And we know Randy was here. I did the biggest talk, part of the talking because of this, but please, Randy, go ahead and put your thoughts in.
No, and again, thank you, Diane, for the collaboration on this. This has been, I don't know how many hours that we've sat and thought about this. One thing to take into consideration with the models, when it talks about where we take and land anything and what it turns, in turn addresses, that is not taking into account the wages that the Fire Department is actually going to do, which, again, we have assessed that that's where the bleeding is most apparent, as well as in Public Works. And so when you look at those percentages, we don't have those modeled out because, again, that is up to the discretion of the department head as well as the city manager. So again, from a wage, you know, competitive issue perspective for Fire, it's actually going to be even better. We just don't know how that is because that is a negotiation with how we've kind of structured it that is between the department director and city manager. So just wanted to kind of...
Yes, yeah, thank you to clarify that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Diane and Randy. We're now going to go into a public hearing. You've kind of heard a variety of pieces of information. The intent now would be is the council needs to hear your ideas, your voices, your concerns, your questions. This is going to be a little different than public comment because I've asked the council, if they feel they need to, after you're given your four minutes, to try to provide a response to what comes out of the, your comments, that if they can, they can provide a response to you in this meeting before we get to the next individual. So with that, counsel, do I have a motion then to go into a public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We are now in a public hearing. Please come to the mic, give us your name and address, and share your thoughts. Thank you.
Hello, thanks. I'm Deion Chastain, 3751 West, 5575 South. I read Wilson and Scadden's worksheet with interest. You basically went over it just now. Thank you. They mentioned cutting services, the quality of services, staff and programs. They ask, "What product do we as citizens want? How much are citizens willing to pay? Are top-quality services for citizens a must, or do they prefer a step down in order to avoid a tax increase?" Many here want to avoid a tax increase, but we don't know what a step down in quality of services actually means. What does it look like? Does it look like cutting hours at the complex? No law enforcement on duty between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 a.m.? No snow removal? Tell us what this would actually look like so we citizens can tell you whether or not we want it. They say citizens' preferences are priority, but I ask, "How do you measure our preferences? What are our options?" You did say something tonight that wasn't in the packet. You talked about $600,000 cut last year. What were those cuts? I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention then. To know again what they are now, you kept about 85% of that. What were those? Show me. You said you went through line by line and found $100,000 worth of line items that are emergency, that you can use those, the general fund for. What were they? Okay? So then you talked about salmon bake. That wasn't in the packet. You talked about fireworks. I thought those were donated. You talked about some of those things. Thank you for those examples. I don't know what this step down in services looks like, so how can I tell you? Let's see. Scadden and Wilson said many cuts have been included in the budget, but what exactly are those, like I just asked? After mentioning those cuts, they then say, "The budget is already shaved down to the bone at current level of service," which makes it sounds like, sound like you are not interested in stepping anything down. Thank you, Mayor Dan Doy for telling us 24 things the city has talked about, city council has talked about since January, six of what you did. Thank you for pointing that out. I want a little bit more details on the other stuff. If you tell us what we could, sorry, if you tell us that we could avoid a tax increase, but that would mean maybe no snow removal, for example, we may actually support a tax increase. But you are not giving us concrete examples. You did tonight, sorry, I wrote this a little earlier. Paint the picture. Show us what has been cut or what could be cut, and let us react to that. You may be surprised. We may actually prefer a tax increase if you show us what we are buying. Two of you will be gone in four months and won't ever have to do a Roy City budget ever again. Three of you are running right now, so maybe you're being very careful of painting that picture because we may react to that. But we also react to a tax increase, so please be specific so we can tell you what we're willing to do. What does that quality of service, step down mean? I want to know. I don't want my taxes raised, but I also want to know. I can't answer you. I don't have enough information.
Okay. Is this an okay time for us to respond then?
When she's done with her comments. If you have a comment, please make it.
Well, if you don't mind, I think maybe one of the best places would be is maybe we could ask Chief Williams to maybe come and talk about what some of those cuts would have to be, so we would know. And then maybe we can ask Brock and Public Works what some of those cuts might be looking like in regards to, you know, when we have to start doing that. Because that way, they know right there. If that would be okay, Chief Williams?
And/or talk about what we cut from last year's budget too.
And Michelle from Parks, what we cut from her last year too. So every department that got cut.
Yep. I have examples that I can give.
Thank you, Diane. That's a good, good point, good question.
Mayor, counsel, and Roy residents, I think it's important you do understand what those cuts are. Can I, do you mind if I address the public?
Sure.
Just turn around.
And just keep that mic right by it, yeah.
So like they've mentioned, we've had a turnaround really over two-thirds. And what that means and translates to is when you hire new firefighters, we have to get them trained. And so if we have two-thirds of new firefighters, and each one of the firefighters are left, that I can honestly say left for wages. And so what that means is when, when we go out on a call, and you guys all understand the job that we do. We have airplanes that fall from the sky. We have horrific accidents that happen. Our job is unpredictable. And so I like to look as a warrior insurance. And really, we're the individuals who are there like a Swiss army knife. We're really asked to do about everything. If you call for the cat, I know that sounds silly, but we do that. We rescue ducks, right? That's little stuff. But really, we do about anything that the, we are, we serve you in any capacity. And so those services, when we don't have the people, so when we talk about cuts and what that translates to, let's take for a minute a scenario. We have the mother and the father here, and we have, right now, we run three ambulances, okay? Two respond up to the east side, one responds to the west side. We have a third one that takes the inter-facility transfers out of the ER. Those are required of us to do, and we get good revenue when we do that. So let's take a scenario when I don't have staffing. Our staffing levels are down. People leave. We have sick people. We have injuries. We have pregnancies. All that, we're trying to maintain staffing. When we can't do that, we can't control the calls. They're not predictable, right? And so we try to maintain that staffing. When we don't have the staffing, and when we talk about cutting services, that third ambulance can no longer be there. So what does that mean? Let's take a scenario. We have an ambulance on a call to the east side. We have another call on the west side. We now are vulnerable, meaning we don't have any ambulance services to give you in the city to provide you that care. So that's going to be a delayed response. The way we do that is through automatic aid. That means Clinton City Weaver Fire will come in from their fire station. What that is, it's a delayed response. We can't provide the education to the children in the elementaries. We had a clown program. We had to cut that. We don't have the budget for it. So over 3,000 kids don't get fire safety messages. It goes on and on. And so when we talk about cutting services, it's the very services that all of you, we have a standard here at Roy, and it's top-tiered standard. I can't guarantee that when two-thirds of my guys, and I'm telling you, they're great men and women, but when they're not trained to the level, how can I give you that standard? And so that's what it translates to when we have the high turnover. The mayor talked about people leaving, and we're kind of like the footstool for the departments. Right now, we have a high standard, and I would expect that's what you want when we show up. And if you don't, I need to know. But when we talk about cuts, that's what we're translating to, is providing you top-tiered service with men and women. If we don't have them, we can't provide those. Did I answer that?
Thank you, chief.
Sorry, where'd she go?
Anybody else want to...
Is that, and really, I think police could say the same thing. I mean, but that's what it translates to. Any more questions about...
I mean, I guess one other thing... Well, I wanted to ask you a question too, Chief Williams, about the STEP program, about changing to that for paying your employees, what you feel about that?
Excuse me, can you explain, what do you mean the STEP program?
Okay, let's make sure, and we're going to have that conversation. I don't think he should be the one talking about the STEP program at this moment because it's a public hearing. I want to hear what the public have to say, that he certainly needs to be a resource to you as we now venture into that part of the conversation. So hold that thought, chief. Okay? I'm in a public hearing. I need to hear what every one of these people in here want to step up and say, so I try to get out of here sometime between now and midnight. Thank you, chief.
And Brock?
Wait a minute, hold that thought just a second. I think, Michelle, the question was asked that you two maybe provide... I don't want, I don't want questions now coming from outside of the mic or we'll lose them, okay?
So come up to the mic, and then you can ask...
Let me just make sure, Diane, we got us in a tough spot here. Hold the thought. The question that went out was they wanted Public Works and they wanted Michelle from Parks and Rec to stand up and answer your question, which was exactly what was impacted by the $647,000 of budget that was not included?
What services would be cut?
Were cut. Okay.
And what would be cut if we don't pass?
So that's the question on the table. Hold on just one second. We need to answer that. So Public Works, Parks and Rec, take a second and follow the chief and finish that conversation before I get to the next comment.
Okay, Mayor and counsel, thanks for having me here. So the majority of Public Works...
Put the mic, put the mic real close.
The majority of the people in Public Works are funded from the enterprise funds, okay?
Yes.
So the...
Just hold it up.
Sorry. So the Streets Department is the one that's mainly affected as far, straight out of the general fund. So as far as us cutting services, that's your asphalt, your snowplow, your potholes, anything like that. And I mean, as far as us cutting our budgets last year, it was all of our operating costs. So your, our buildings, you know, like in the shop, there was, you know, stuff that we had to drop down there. We couldn't keep... We couldn't keep an inventory there to be able to fix the vehicles in a timely manner, I would say. We'd have to order it. We didn't have it on hand right there. So that was, as far as Public Works goes, that's the main problem that we had and what we did.
Perfect. And just for clarification, and thank you. The majority of the Public Works is operating out of the enterprise funds. That's where they get paid. It has nothing to do with this property tax except that portion that deals with the street. And it's a very small portion of the entire Public Works budget. So although they got, they had to make their cuts to get to the $647,000 cuts that carried over from last year into this year, the impact was not as great on them because they had all the enterprise funds that they were funded to continue with all the other stuff they're required to do in water, sewer and everything else they do. So thank you, Michelle, your comments relative to what impact you had to experience. And please mention fertilizer. That was a big conversation last time.
Sorry, Brock. Shorty's got to stand up here too. Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you so much. In reference to your question regarding the cuts from last fiscal year, I just want to clarify for everybody that the Parks and Rec Department includes Parks, Recreation, Complex, Aquatic Center and Roy Days. So we took a comprehensive look across all of those divisions and all of those budgets and tried to separate things kind of evenly. So first of all, we took a look at our employee training and pulled all of that money out except for essential certifications that we had to redo. Outside of that, we did in Parks, cut the grounds and maintenance budget, which affected the fertilizations that we could do throughout the year. Um, you may or may not have noticed that several parks, several spaces didn't get fertilized this fall. Um, at the Complex and Aquatic Center, we pulled back on our equipment replacements. So we are just pushing down the road. The replacement of any type of equipment, whether it's fitness equipment, the lawn chairs you sit on at the aquatic center, for example, things like that. In Recreation, it was more on the community special events. So we pulled back on doing any Halloween activity that the city has traditionally done. We pulled back on some of the events and some of the things we spent money on at Roy Days, as well as, um, the Easter event pulled back. Looking at fiscal year '26, if we had to pull back, my first reaction would be to continue to look at those free community events while they are loved and I believe that they are an essential part of our community just as much as any firefighter or police officer. It what makes you guys want to live here. We would have to cut that. So that would be your Roy Days. That would be the Easter event. That would be those type of things. Unfortunately, they are expensive and they don't bring any money in. So that would be my first recommendation before going further into operations.
Okay, thank you.
And Michelle, I have one question for you. Are you fully staffed? Or do you have your department fully staffed?
I have a secretary position that is currently not filled in my Parks and Rec Department. Other than that, we are fully staffed. However, I would say, don't confuse being fully staffed for well compensated. Our, my staff is just watching this just as much as the fire department and everybody else. They are underpaid for their positions.
Thank you.
Now, uh, and you'll have a comment. Please step up and then just give us your name and address and then whatever you'd like to talk about.
My name is David Peterson. I live at 4517 South, 2600 West in Roy. I've been a Roy citizen for 44 years and I've been following the minutes that the Roy Council has been publishing since January because I knew that this issue was going to be very sticky. I have two letters to read in my four minutes and I have one question. My question is that when we hire, hire somebody for EMS service, do we put out, is there a cash outlay for any of their equipment for them personally? I'm asking the chief.
We can do that. Why don't you do your, why don't you do your four minute comment? And then we'll answer the questions out.
All right. Okay, thank you. I have a letter from a neighbor of mine that couldn't be here tonight. Dennis and Robin Barney. They live at 2672 West, 4550 South. And they say to the Roy City Council members, "We would like to thank the Roy City Council members for all the hard work they've been doing over the last year to address the financial changes that Roy City is currently facing. We know that there is a big turnover in the fire and police departments because other cities are able to offer better salaries and cost of living compensation. We know that every time we lose an employee, it is very expensive to outfit the person hired to take their place. This is concerning. We want to live in a safe place and have good, experienced police officers and fire personnel. So we feel it is critical that funding be increased to help alleviate this high turnover problem. We support the tax increase proposed by the council. We know they are working hard to figure out a way to maintain the service we need as a community and inexpensively as possible. We also support the council in seeking ways to enlarge revenue needed to run the city and sustain the city's services that we need. Thank you for listening to our input, Dennis and Robin Barney." This other one says, "I've been studying," this is from me. "I've been studying Mayor Dandoy's presentation, history of how we got there, FYE 2026 budget and the agenda worksheet that Councilman Randy Scadden and Councilwoman Diane Wilson have published. And here's what I'd like to say. Mayor Dandoy's presentation really helped me understand the depth and breadth of the problem that we face. Our fire chief's example of holding two positions to cut expenses is a good example for other departments. However, as a citizen, I'm not very comfortable knowing the kind of demands that can simultaneously hit EMS crews. It's amazing how quickly a logistical puzzle is created. By holding two positions open, can we be left without sufficient help? Even when other municipalities, emergency, even when other municipalities, emergency responders pitch in? Perhaps certain admin jobs could be sacrificed such that money is redirected from wages and benefits to the general fund where it would be redistributed, redistributed to direct costs. The proposal shows several tax increase strategies with scenarios to help clarify them. Due to the present situation, I'm in favor of a tax increase. I am in favor of using a portion of one-time sales money to reduce the rate. However, I want to encourage you to make sure our emergency rainy day fund is also funded. I think that scenario seven or five of the present, presentation by Councilmen Scadden and Councilwoman Wilson makes some sense. As long, as a longtime citizen, I ask that you, that you do, whatever you decide to do, please fix this problem so next year we won't have to do it again."
Okay, thank you.
Hey, did you want to ask Chief Williams that question?
So my understanding is when.
Well, we've already got the question.
Yeah, so let him go ahead and make the.
He can come up and answer.
Chief, make your.
I'd also just caution Council, turning it into a question and answer session, that, I mean, that is not the purpose of the public hearing.
I know. I, I just want to make sure that in the course of this, that they have a clear understanding of what we're facing. And, and if you walk out of this room basically saying is we're doing it right, then I think we've done our job. If you walk out or just as disgusted as we've seen over the years of saying is, why did they make the decision? Or as I've heard too many times, there simply says, "It makes no difference coming into this meeting because the council has already decided that we have failed you." You need to walk out of here at least understanding. So Chief, let's just provide a real quick response. We got a lot more people wanting to answer.
Yeah, I'm going to quickly turn to my deputy chief, King, to quickly answer your question, okay?
Thank you, Mike King, Deputy Fire Chief. I run the operations. Uh, just for a, for a new firefighter coming, most of them that we get right now is coming right out of school. So they have, uh, no gear, lack of training, and we're trying to bring them up to our standards. We average right around $13,000 per firefighter to get them in the door, get the testing done, get certifications done in order to be a basic fireman.
That's great to know. Thank you. Okay, is still a public hearing? Please name and address. Thank you.
My name is Jody Johnson. I'm Jason Strong's mother. 2661 West, 4650 South. You asked a question, you don't know what it would look like for, to have a step down in, in the way that the fire department handles things or, you know, in quality care. You don't want to find out. Because of the fine care that the first responders had with my son, I think from the time that they got the call to the time he, they got the call, they responded, they had him to Ogden Regional, lifelighted to primary in just a little over half an hour. That's what saved my son was the first responders and their, their dedication and their knowledge. If we don't pay them for what they're worth, somebody else is going to take them. And delayed response isn't an option. In a situation like ours, delayed response would have meant that he didn't enter sixth grade today, which he did. So the only question I have is, do you really want to find out what it's like? It could be your son. It could be your granddaughter, your grandchild, your family. I never thought it would happen to me and mine, but it did. So with that being said, I just urge you to try to look at the bigger picture. Try to think of your own and realize that we need these fine fire department. We need those fine paramedics and we need to look after our own. And we can't do that without them. So we need to pay them what they're worth. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that testimony. Okay? Anybody else like to share a thought?
Mayor and Council.
Name and address, please.
Ray Saxton, 5710 South, 2250 West. And, uh, the first thing I want to do is salute our public defenders. In light of recent tragedy in Boxheller County, it only shines a light on the sacrifices, the determination and the safety they provide. So I salute our public defenders. Now, by way of suggestion, we've talked a lot tonight about knowing what the public wants by way of services, what the public's willing to pay for, and what these cuts will mean in lack of services. Thirty years ago, actually at Wyndale Action, we had Utah State University come to Roy and conduct a community needs survey. This was citywide and it asked the residents, "What do you want? What do you want to pay for? What's important for you? What is good enough as it exists today?" That survey was conducted, no charge. This is the responsibility of Utah State University as a land-grant college. They will do it. Why haven't we asked those same questions for 30 years? That's what I want to know. And we've heard a proposal tonight for a 4% tax increase that could be reduced to half of that if we spent some one-time money. We've heard a proposal tonight for a 9% tax increase. Council members, 28.71% is ludicrous. It makes no sense to support that kind of tax increase. We instead have to look at efficiencies, look at where our money is going, do, if you will, a dodge effort in Roy City to see where we could save to reduce to these lower proposals. I encourage all of you to think about that. Find out what the public wants before you propose a 28% increase. Doesn't make sense. And you anybody want to respond? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And by the way, just Mr. Saxton, I'll indicate to you, Roy City solicited in 19, uh, 2016, I'm going back a few years, Matt, and asked Weaver State University if they would help us with a survey to get a feel in terms of what the public wants. It was really kind of interesting and that, basically that survey is public information. But as we've talked in previous city council meetings, there's a, there's a debate going right now to do another one. Certainly a survey that was done six, eight, 10 years ago probably is way too old. We really need to get that updated. So thank you for the comment. Please, name and address, please.
Ty Jason, 3751 West, 5575 South. So I have some concerns with the complex with the fact that we're not raising the cost there. Uh, we raised it for the Aquatic Center, but we sure didn't do it for the complex. And with my numbers of 38,000 residents that could go, they'd have to go seven times a year at the $4 rate in order to break even.
Could you get a little closer?
Yeah. And then, um, as I've looked at some of those other numbers, back in 2021, we had 87,000 people that attended the complex. And with the rate of $4, uh, we wouldn't be able to break even. We'd be about $750,000 in debt annually with that. Raising it to 1150 each time would break even. Now, this is just stuff that I ran with AI and some other things to make it very quick and simple. Uh, I'd also like to know what other employees are making in the city. I know that when I looked online, some are making $240,000 a year. Like Gina Butter, she makes $360,000 a year. And yet they still raised it. Why can't they cap that and say, here's a cap for what they're making? Why are we comparing ourselves to Ogden and Leighton? Why not South Ogden and Clinton City? Cities that are more like us. And with our population going down, yes. We're not going to be able to increase population more than other cities because they've got land, they're going to continue to grow. We're going to be outgrown. And so we got to look at the high level, not our fire department, not our police. We need to increase them. But the other ones that are way up above them, we need to look at what the cap should be there. $240,000 is not something we should be doing. Another area that we could look to cut is, uh, there's another football program going on. We could cut that and we could reduce a director from the Public Works and Department. Right there, there'd be about $350,000 saved. We have some other areas that we could cut. I know we can't do it now. I know that, uh, one of the reasons why I got involved is because I had a lot of residents that were coming to me and saying, "You know, when you go there and go to city council, they've already decided what they're going to do. And they're going to do what they're going to do." And they wanted somebody to come in and represent them and say, hey, let's listen to the public. I'm glad that we're having this forum. I'm glad that we're going a little bit outside of what Matt Wilson would be comfortable with, with you guys answering the questions, uh, because that's not the typical forum. But it is needed tonight because everybody's concerned about the 28% increase. When I did that on social media, I had 133,000 views when I put that 28% out there. Now granted, most of those weren't residents of Roy, but it did capture a lot of attention. My social media's never had that many views. But I will continue to educate the people as much as possible. And then I look at the AMI, it's 91,000. Why can't we look at that rate and say, employees at the top tier, she made X? Not everyone is making 240,000. How many people should be making six figures out of the 91,000 of an AMI? If we're going to do a comparison of affordable housing. So there's some other things that I think that we're not focused on in what you guys looked at that I wished you would have. I wanted to reach out and give people that information, but, uh, I know I gave some to Saxton. I gave some to Randy and I didn't get an opportunity to give it to Diane because I wanted to have some of that conversation with, um, Matt Andrews specifically of where we can cut at the top tier and why we have two attorneys. Why do we have two city managers, um, and two Park and Rec directors? There's areas where we can get maybe someone on retain, on retainer, for example, for an attorney. Now, I know those costs don't come from the general fund. However, there are areas where I believe we can cut and we can make a little bit more. more efficiencies.
Good. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Tom Dunford, twenty-five fifty-two West, forty-four hundred South. I've been going through my mind on several levels of changing what I really want to say. I know we're here talking about taxes, but the real issue is quality of life for the citizens of the city of Roy. And we need to do what is necessary to continue to enjoy what we've enjoyed. I know, Diane, you talked about getting rid of the twinkle lights, but gosh, that's like my favorite thing that we do in the city. I think that display rivals Ogden's, quite frankly, so. I'm opposed to getting rid of the twinkle lights. I've spent thirty-five years in my career working to secure in the state of Utah safe and healthy communities. I'm currently an administrator in the Department of Health and Human Services. I oversee all of the drug and alcohol treatment programs in the state of Utah. If we start cutting, and if we continue to have high turnover in our first responders, we as a city are going to suffer. There's no question about that. I've seen it happen time and time again in my own career, and I know that this is a difficult decision. And I know that you guys are probably, no matter what you do, you're not going to make everybody happy. Someone's going to flip you off when you're driving down the road. I know that. I've experienced it myself. But thank you for at least considering the hard decision. I want to put it on the record that I am opposed to tax increases, but I support more safe and healthy community in the city of Roy. I support all of those ancillary services, the parks and recreation, not only provides for the adults, but especially the youth. And as you know, Roy is not the safest place. We've made the news for some pretty horrendous crimes over the years. And without our first responders and well-trained and loyal first responders, we cannot enjoy a quality of life that we deserve as a citizenry here in this community. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
Can I ask a question in regards to that, or?
If you'd like to make a question, you'd like to make a statement, but I think it's you asking him to give you an answer?
It was just a clarification.
You can provide any clarification before he speaks, but...
Clarification, you said you were against tax increases, but you wanted the extra services. Does that mean you're against...
Tax increases.
Oh, this time, okay, you just support taxes.
Opposed ultimately.
Okay.
But you're in favor of this for where it goes. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please, name and address, please.
Josh Rice, five-four-ten South, twenty-three hundred West. So one, I do budgets for a living with my job, and you're not supposed to ever use one-time funds for a constant expense. I understand why you would want to do that. I get it. I don't like taxes, but at the same time, that's not sustainable. You'll have to figure out where to find that funds next year, and now your one-time funds for a huge accident, a huge emergency, a fire, what have you, they're gone. And they're not available to use for that that emergency. So that's what those one-time funds are for. For a bit of a bit of context, I was doing some math. So at for the average house cost per month in Roy, using Zillow, is about two-thousand-two-hundred a month. And that's not utilities, that's just housing costs. The recommended gross, you're recommended to use twenty percent, twenty-eight percent maximum of your salary, gross salary, for your house. So for the median house in Roy, that is ninety-four thousand dollars, yeah, ninety-four thousand dollars a year. The average salary, I believe the mayor mentioned, was ninety thousand dollars a year in Roy. So that bumps us up to twenty-nine percent. At nineteen dollars an hour, you're making a yearly salary of about thirty-nine thousand. That's sixty-seven percent of your yearly salary on housing. At seventeen dollars an hour, which is where the minimum wage is now, that's seventy-four percent. At seventy-four, at that seventy-four percent, thirty-five thousand dollars a year, you need two and a half people at minimum wage in a house to be able to bring it back down to that twenty-eight percent. With two people making minimum wage, that's a thirty-seven percent of your annual gross income pre-tax spent on housing. And I think that that context is helpful for those, because I know that every dollar matters, especially for housing. So I support raising our taxes so that our men and women, our firefighters, our public works, don't have to worry about housing, don't have to stress about housing, because that sucks. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Mary Lynn Jones, twenty-three fifty-nine West, fifty-seven fifty South. I'm for the highest raise in taxes, and I am not for taxes, just like the other person said. To my understanding, our fire department building is not earthquake safe. It doesn't meet the state standards. Where are we going to get the money to fix that? I think it's a shame that our fire chief and the fire department is out trying to raise eighty thousand dollars for a training facility for our fire people to be better trained. He shouldn't have to go out and have donations made in order to train our fire people. And if we could get an increase in our taxes that goes to benefit our fire department, so be it. I'll give up two of my thirty-two ounce Dr. Peppers at McDonald's every week, and I'll save that ten dollars a month that it will increase my taxes for the end of the year for the hundred and eight dollars or whatever it is. And I'm not for cutting anything that brings joy and to our to our citizens. If we get rid of the fun things for our kids, they're going to get in trouble more than they are getting in trouble now. And if we get rid of the complex, we've put all that money into it to fix it, let our people use it and enjoy it. And if you don't use it and you're complaining about it, that's your fault. You can go use it if you want to. But I know lots of people that enjoy the Aquatic Center. I know lots of people that love the our complex. They love our Christmas displays, they love Roy Days. Don't get rid of those things. For my hundred and eight dollars a year more, I'll I'll pay that, so that all of us across the board can enjoy what Roy could be and is, I think, a great city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Please, name and address.
Eddie Walter, fifty-five seventy South, twenty-fifty West. I've been living in Roy since nineteen eighty-three. One, I'd give the city council an F. Two, I'd give that Parks Department a minus triple F. I could count on these fingers the amount of time they plow my street in the winter. And believe me, that's true. But what I don't want is, I'm eighty, well, I'm seventy-nine, I got a bad ticker, and when I have that heart attack, I want that guy down there. And when I thought I had it two years ago, he was damn down there and saved me. So whatever they need to do ought to be done. What they need ought to be cut or as we can afford without raising taxes. And that's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Name and address, please.
Thank you, the council members. Anthony Dick, thirty-six nineteen West, sorry, thirty-six nineteen West, fifty-three fifty South. First, I want to thank everybody for showing up. This is a, I think, is most people I've seen here in years. Just a few comments and thoughts. I'm a math geek, I've been working through a lot of numbers, things I want to go on record for. It makes bad fiscal sense to use one-time money for ongoing expenses. It's just pushing the pushing the problem down the street, and we would do have this whole conversation exponentially greater next year. I think that's always a bad idea. We've talked about ranges of percent increases from eight-point-seven to twenty-eight. You put that in numbers, you're looking at somewhere between thirty dollars a year to about a hundred-eight dollars a year on a median home for some people. Yeah, and Representative Saxton's put that out. That's that's a little too much for people. There are programs in place hopefully to help those individuals. For most individuals, that's within reach. However, there's some things I want to point out and consider. The fire department brought up, they have seventy-one turnovers in the last three years, and roughly about thirteen thousand dollars to outfit a new person. That means we've spent almost a million dollars in retraining those seventy-one positions over the last ten years. That's a huge expense. Take that into account. If we can keep those people, all of a sudden, our training expenses, material expenses have gone down. Correct me if I'm wrong here. In terms of parks and rec, I appreciate cuts. I've had conversations with a lot of those peoples. I do not believe that we as a community have fully engaged all the volunteerism and willingness we have in our community. We talk about cutting things like our Easter celebration, which I've loved and I've taken part of, and things in Roy Days, the salmon bakes, all of these things I've done with my family and loved it. I think we can still tap into those same activities if we tap into the organization, civic things, churches, and everybody we have in Roy. We can do a lot of these things. Yeah, it takes a little more work and planning, but I think we can work it out. I think we can balance our budget, raise, I think, excuse me, back up. I think we can provide our essential services, but we need to have some increase to do it. It's pitiful, it's sinful that I can send my young man to Sam's Club, and he gets more per hour than our opening EMT fireman. And I have pay stubs that show that. We've got to take care of our guys. We can't let them bleed out like this. We need to engage our community more. And take the spirit of Roy that all of us love here. Our Bureau of Labor Statistics says our statewide average public coal increases, somewhere between three and five percent off their website. Private industry in the state goes between six and seven. I think it's wrong if we can't guarantee that two and a half percent increase that I see on all of these things. You guys have a complicated equation to work through, but I would encourage you in planning your budget and activities, think about what are our essential services, make sure we're not bleeding out. But also simultaneously, think about where can we engage the city of Roy and get our community to buy in and provide those services and activities that we love as a city. I think we can do both. I do not believe that we can provide the quality of services that we have and that we want and we need and not raise taxes to some extent. I'm for the tax increase. I think we can find a middle ground and look forward, and I think the education of the public here is a great first step in accomplishing those goals. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. For the record, make sure that we can answer at least part of the question. Over the last three years, twenty-eight firefighters have left us, not seventy. In Public Works, we lost twenty-four. The percentage of impact over those three years was actually seventy percent of an impact, seventy percent for fire and actually seventy-one percent for Public Works.
So that, I apologize, so that nine-hundred-twenty-three million, roughly, three-hundred-and-forty-seven, well, nine-hundred-twenty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand.
That's a lot of money. You're right. Please. Name and address, please.
Janelle Holbert, I live at forty-one seventy-eight Westlake Drive in Roy, Utah. First, just so I can get out of the way and say where I stand, I think that what I think would be wisest would be to use those one-time funds for those one-time expenses. I think that's a good idea. I think that that helps alleviate a little bit of the tax, and it also helps us meet some of the needs that are one-time things that we need done. So I think that is a good idea. I fully support that. I also have, I just want to say that I've been watching or attending our planning commission meetings and also the city council meetings for well over two years now, and if I can't go, I watch it online later. And so I've heard a lot of the budget cuts they had to make last year, all the things they talked about tonight, the heads of departments, those were cut. It was interesting watching some of the responses through the year, like the Halloween celebration was cut, and people noticed that. People definitely noticed the cuts in the Roy Days this year. I had people reach out to me and say, hey, why didn't they do this? Why didn't they do that? And I said, well, because of funding. And so people do notice those things, even, maybe not everybody notices them, but some people notice those things. Also, unfortunately, and I guess a little bit fortunately, I've personally experienced having to have police and fire be involved in my personal life and in the lives of people close to me. And one happened to be, we got rear-ended, and it ended up being a DUI. The police had to come and take care of the situation. And later, when I went and talked to the head of the police chief, we talked about, you know, some of those officers, we can't have as many officers riding around because we have one's training right now. And so every time we lose an officer, that means that we're retraining another one, and it means that we're also cutting down on how many officers can be driving around at a time. Like, you can't have four cars, you can only have two cars because they have to ride together. Does that make sense? Probably explaining that horribly. But anyway, and so that's something that anytime we have high turnover in those places, we have to think about that as well. And the same with fire, you know, every time we have to train a new person, that has costs. And so we actually end up spending more than we would otherwise just paying what we should. And we could say that probably about every department here to some extent. So I guess what I'm saying is that I am for some tax increase. I want us to be wise in how we do it. I don't think we should just go to the maximum just because. I think that we should be careful about it and remember that there are lots of people in our city struggling. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to share a thought? Name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Alexis Jackson at fifty-eight ten South, forty-one seventy-five West. First of all, Council, thank you so much for the hard work that is very evident by the reports and the worksheets that have come out today, in addition to Mayor Dandory, his presentation, which I reviewed in advance of this meeting, and for the reports and worksheets by Councilmember Scadon Wilson, and also my Councilmember Saxton. I think it's very, it was clear and it was articulated well that the budget has been gone through item by item. I think that that it hasn't been overlooked, item by item, and and there have been things in the budget in recent years that have been that have been not stricken or stricken in accordance with public input. And so I want to, I want to first just express my appreciation for that hard work and for really the dedication that has that I've seen there. Also, I think, especially in Councilmember Saxton's report, the information about the tax abatements and the reliefs that are that are in place, it just kind of goes to show that these are things that the council's aware of. This this truly, the burdens that are placed on taxpayers are not fabricated. They they can be real, they really are real, and and it's and it's just, it's just that extra information to say, hey, if this is what we need to do, we want you to know of these things that are in place, we want you to get relief and help if you so fit that. And so I appreciate that information as well that's coming through. Thank you for the commitment to efficiently running this city and doing what needs to be done. This is, I keep saying it this way, but I feel like this is really what it is. It's truly a puzzle. It's really a very complex, four-D, five-D puzzle that really is in place, and and so I I understand that. And so just thank you for all the dedication and the hard work is really what I want to know, what I want to come across right now. And as well as the And as well as the presence and the representation of critical departments, Chief Quinn, Chief Williams, and Public Works and the staff of Roy City. And I just would, would counsel, I guess the council tonight, while this deliberation's going on on the floor, to consider the, the message that is sent to these departments and what that communicates in this, the decision that is made tonight and how that communicates the worth of the people that are working in this city, only to benefit us. With that, I, I think that that just about sums it up. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to share a thought? Name and address, please.
My name is Anna Graff. I live at 5410 South, 2300 West here in Roy. And I've been mulling over this for quite some time. And my household, where we're at right now, we could handle a 28% tax increase and be okay. But 10 years ago, as a single mom, I could not. And the multitude of retired families, of families who are on fixed incomes are also going to face hardship by having increases. As we all know, it's not just the increase that we're talking about here tonight that would impact our yearly tax increases overall. One-time use of some of the, the referenced funds, especially the $100,000, to release some of that budget stress from one-time use items, I think is a very responsible use of those funds and can help to relieve some of that stress for our residents and for our budget. But one-time use funds for repeating costs such as payroll is like paying for a portion of your power bill by selling your furniture. At some point, you run out of things to sell and that power bill is going to come around over and over and over. You got to find another way to change to make that work. So again, any use of one-time funds for repeating costs, I believe it comes with a responsibility to create a solid plan to provide for those funds moving forward. And so if we are using over and above that $100,000, then we have a responsibility, I'm sorry, it's on your shoulders, y'all, I'm sorry, but there's a responsibility there to make sure that there's a plan in place to relieve that future increase next year because we know this is going to keep repeating. Just as a personal household budget has its ups and downs and it has its tight periods and sometimes we have to tighten our belts, I think that's what we're looking at right now. And there may be things that have come up today that we love, but they are more on our want side than on our need side. And for a period of time, we may have to tighten our belt there. And when it comes to things like our lights, our Roy days, those of us who are in a position to be able to step up and to help fill that gap while we get this sorted to make sure that we have fair compensation for those of us who are maintaining our safety in the city, I believe that is a fair trade. And so while I cannot stand up here and say, yes, I support a 28% tax increase because I understand that burden, I also cannot in good conscience say that I can support the, the four and something percent tax increase because of the burden that that will continue to place on our budget every single year moving forward. And I don't think that's a responsible choice. But thank you for taking us into consideration. I know there is so much that is going into this and thank you for having an opportunity for us to bring our concerns, to bring our perspectives, and to hopefully bring some possible solutions as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Okay, name and address. You might want to pick that up and just speak into it.
Patrick Standage, 5020 South, 3375 West. I just had a couple of questions. You talk about Roy population has been going down, but yet everywhere I go, I'm seeing high-rise apartments and condos being built or have already been built. So I kind of wonder. And then also, the property tax notice that I got a couple of months ago compared 2024 to the proposed of 2025. And you seem like you were talking about 2026 and a lot of the stuff you were mentioning earlier. So this is for, really, this is for approved of the 2025 that we got and compared it to 2024 about two or three months ago.
Okay, let me see if I can answer. Are you, you done with your comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Let me see if I can offer some information. When we refer to the budget, we refer to the budget in terms of the, the end year. And so we are now talking about the, the calendar year 2025, 2026 budget. And so every dialogue we have, it's always about the fiscal year 26 budget. And so that's the conversation tonight. We just left the fiscal year 25 budget. And so a lot of data that you see, particularly in the charts I provided, were in large part because they were taken from documented resources. Meaning is, is that some independent audit has validated that the information is correct. Sometimes it gets a little different. Example, the document I took out of the annual comprehensive financial report out of 2024 said Roy City carried over, over $20 million in reserve funds. That's, that's the document. That's what the auditor proved. That's what it is. Brian says, I need to find an answer. And so he asked the question and his number came back at $26.1 million of reserve funds. It certainly can happen. It's almost like a, a moment in time, but you have to make decisions on the best facts you have. And instability in those numbers can skew this thing one way or to another. And now you're making what appears to be poor decisions. That goes to the heart of the problem we're having with population. Matt and I have talked over and over again about why the numbers are going down. The numbers in Roy City population numbers went down in large part because of the US Census, which was collected in 2020. That's the 10-year requirement on a census. We struggled. There are cities right now who looked at the data and finding out, man, this doesn't make any sense. In July, and Matt helped me to make sure I'm on target, but in July, the legislators in our past legislation says, we're not going to use the, the census anymore. We're going to go to what's called the Utah Population...
Something, it's a, I know what you're talking about.
It's committee. It's a Utah Population Committee, UPC. Where did that come from? I have no clue. But all of the calculations now, all of the calculations now for every city, every county, even the state, is coming from the Utah Population Committee. It's not the, the Census Bureau. So what that means is, is that we're seeing changes. On July 1st, Roy City gained 200 employees, or excuse me, 200 residents. Where did they come from? But there are 200 more. But places like West Haven and North Ogden, they took a 1,500 or a 1,700 resident drop. The impact to those numbers ripples to all of the financial resources that we have. What, what our populations are basically calculated on. Good for us, we're finally getting a little bit of a turn. Bad for West Haven and, and North Ogden and a couple of other cities in Weber County, who basically are saying is, man, that was devastating. Because as I mentioned to you, the amount of sales tax revenue they are going to collect is directly related to what the Utah Population Committee says, the number of people living in the city. And so it becomes very important we watch that and we try to track that and we look at that. I don't like what you've seen. I don't think it's right. I will tell you, in all fairness, we took out 50-some-odd homes on 5,600, okay? We took out a number of businesses in that widening. Those residents are gone. They're no longer in our, in our midst. And I will tell you one more thing. When we widen 3,500, which is going to happen starting in 2027, I'm going to tell you they're going to take more residents out. These are resident populations, not only because they count as our resident population, but they also count in terms of our property tax. And if that property goes under the control of UDOT, which it does, UDOT doesn't pay property tax to Roy City. So we have got some challenges we got to work through. And so may I just suggest that my good mayors in West Haven and North Ogden are now working diligently with the state legislators to figure out what happened to them and try to find a solution. I don't know where that's going to go, but when we look at these populations going down, we're struggling because it doesn't make any sense. But what I think, unless I'm going around and counting everybody's, okay, doorknobs and talking who live in them, I'm telling you, I have to live by what the Utah Population Center or Committee says. And sometimes I don't think they got it right. So we're going to try to fix that, okay? That's the challenge we're having with the population numbers. And then thank you for the question.
Well, and one other thing you were talking about, because we're talking about setting the 2025 certified tax rate, but it's for the fiscal year 2026.
That's right.
Because we're not a calendar year for the fiscal year. Our calendar year for our fiscal year goes July 1, 2025 until June 30th, 2026. So, so just, that's why you're hearing 2026 bantered about, but also 2025, just to clarify.
Yeah, and the county works on a calendar year where we work on a fiscal year. So it's, it's just getting all these crazy numbers, right? But when I speak, I speak about a budget that's called the fiscal year 26 budget. And it's because that's the one we're about to deal with right now. In fact, we're living in it right now. Hopefully that'll answer your question. Any other questions or comments? Please step up. Name and address, please.
So I'm Garrett Chasten. I live at 3751 West, 5575 South. So I'm just giving comment. So first off, something that hasn't been mentioned yet is that there are some employees, for some city employees that don't, well, that gets $700 for vehicle allowance. I think that needs to be looked into. And second off, as the way America's going, I'm Gen Z, so the way that my future's looking, you know, we're just going to live in apartments, barely afford food, barely afford anything. That's just where it's going. But to me, I mean, yeah, I do agree that police and firemen do deserve all the money that they need, but as far as everything else is regarded, it all just needs to be cut, in my opinion, because the more and more that people are bled dry of their money, the more and more that leads to more just chaos, sin, because bleeding people dry of their money is satanic, in my opinion. And you are serving Satan if you are bleeding people dry of their money. And so every city needs to do everything in their power to cut as much as they can, as long as it does not void public safety. And that is my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Please, name and address.
Jason Sparr, 44A South, 1650 West. I'm not the one to stretch this meeting on longer than it needs to be.
Okay.
But I joined the planning commission, like you guys would know, but they may not. I joined the planning commission 10 years ago because I didn't like the way Roy was being ran 10 years ago. And I wanted to have a part in the say of how our community was developed. And I felt like over the last 10 years, I've watched very closely the cities, how much cuts that the cities had to make in every department, every year, and trying to satisfy voter, voters, us not wanting to raise taxes. And I've just seen a lot of our city services decline over quite a few, quite, over the same amount of time. So I think ever since the current administration's been in charge, we have definitely had a turnaround and we've made some, definitely some good improvements in, in how we were running things from 10 years ago. So I'm definitely not in favor of making any cuts of any kind. I'm in favor of the, the tax increase. I, I like Diane Wilson and Councilmember Skadden, excuse me, Councilmember Wilson and Skadden's plan for the, for the increase. I'm against the increase or against dipping into the, the, our emergency funds too much. A little bit, maybe be okay. Something comes up, we need something. Whenever I get my taxes back in the year, at the end of the year, I look at my, my car, see if I need new tires on my car. I don't go on vacation. I don't buy a water jet ski or whatever. I, I see what I need to take care of next year that I'm not going to have to pay for and that's what I use my extra funds for. It may not be fun, but it, being adult sucks, I guess, so. Anyway, it's, would be kind of be tough for somebody running for city council to say I'm in, in favor of a tax increase because that kind of can cut me off on some votes possibly, but in this, in this instance, I think it's, it's needed. And, and I think that the fixing, the, the pay system that has been proposed is the, one of the largest problems that we've had over many years. And I think that this, doing that will help us in the years going forward and this will stop the bleed, as it were. And we can, we can go on from here. And then if I get voted on council, I won't be dealing with a problem as big as you've got in front of you right now. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Okay, name and address, please.
Leon Wilson at 4302 South, 2675 West. Several of the following one-liners were generated from the Citizens of Roy Facebook page. You might find this entertaining.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
One person posted, "A concern about taxation without representation. Yet only 25% voted in the recent primary election." Another said, "The council wasn't listening to us. I guess unless we get our way, it's perceived they're not listening to us." The city, here's another comment. "The city council is a part of a deep state conspiracy. Collusive crooks, all but one of them. I feel for those who have to choose between feeding their kids and paying taxes. Hopefully they'll find the time to apply for state relief. If only we could get the city to run on our good looks and personality. Six of the last eight years without a city tax increase is ignoring reality. It just kicks the can down the road. The city is moved, the city is a money-losing operation. Not a department breaks even. All of them just serve." Go figure it out. Here's a few ideas on cutting the budget. This is from, once again, Facebook. Do away with the Parks and Recreation Department. It's too costly. Keep the kids at home playing video games. A third-rate fire department is good enough for me until my house is on fire. Who needs the police? Just buy us all a gun. Who needs all those lights at Christmas time? Bah humbug. We can live without Roy days. All those fireworks just go up in smoke. Why foster community? I don't even like my neighbors. Heck, I don't even know them. Who needs the complex? Just a money pit. The young and old should just go somewhere else. Vasa and EOS are so accessible. Not. The city should just tighten its belt, if it could just afford one. I'm glad we're not changing the name of Roy to Riverdale or Clearfield or even worse, Sunset. As for me, I'm a Roy boy and I'm willing to pay the extra tax. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to share a thought? Please, name and address.
Ernie Valencia, 5065 South, 1850 West. My question is, is to the community, can you put a price on our safety? You can't. I think that the community needs to pull together, start trusting each other more. The city needs to reach out to the community more. There needs to be more communication. People need to create organizations, bring into their town to start creating revenue and help. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you for, for a public hearing. I think we've heard a lot of comments, some good information. We hope now to be able to take everything we've heard, what we understand, and we're going to go into a, a real deep city council discussion. But with that, I do need to basically turn to Brittany.
Well, we need to move out.
Not yet. For the record, Brittany may have, under the new law, may have people who sent an email in or may want to have, make comments. Have you received anything on YouTube or anything that may, needs to be added to this particular hearing?
Just to clarify, Mayor, it would only be comments that were made on YouTube, not the emails.
Just to clarify, Mayor, it would only be comments that were made on YouTube, not the emails.
Okay. Okay, so no comments on YouTube. And interesting now, as a, as a hearing, we need to also consider that medium as an opportunity for those who could not make it here tonight, have some opportunity to have their voice. And as you heard, we had a couple of people earlier sent an email in. And in your packet, those emails were provided to you for consideration. So with that, do I have a motion then to go out of a public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Ann. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Diane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are out of public hearing. Okay, council, you've heard a lot of information, a lot of input. I'm keeping track, obviously, as you are in terms of for and against and somewhere in betweens. I think at this point of the conversation is, let's have a discussion as a council in terms of what we heard, so we have a clear understanding of what's next. And, and if you're not sure what you want to ask, I've got a ton of questions here that I need to get clarification. And hopefully it's the clarification the council will want, or the public will want in terms of some of the proposals on the table. Anybody want to start? Thank you, I will. It's okay with me. To be honest with you, I'm not comfortable, I understand what the step-down requirements are, the items we need to back up in. That was not clarified in any documentation I have. And certainly if we're going to basically say that we're going to approve this or approve that, trying to understand what we're going to basically be removing or changing or adding or whatever needs to be clearly understood. The conversation says, where do you get this information? How do you know what's going on? I will be blunt with you, it's a public service. The law is very clear. Transportation, excuse me, TransparencyUtah.gov is a legislative resource that informs everybody who wants to go in there to find out exactly what the employees of every city, every county, every, in the state government gets paid. Both the salary and the benefits. So, you know, if you've got a real issue with that, and maybe you should, I still struggle, in all fairness, and as much as I like football, and certainly I like the Utah, University of Utah, I still struggle with the millions that the head coach gets for what he does. That is, he's the highest-paid government employee in Utah. And he just happens to be the coach of Utah University. So that website is available to you to see what I make and everybody on this council make and every government employee makes. We don't hide nothing. It's there. I like the idea of more volunteers. That comment was made very clear. And if you've seen some of the things that took place within the Roy days, more volunteers showed up. Whether they help offset some of the costs we needed to take care of the city employees, I will wait to see what the budget document or the outcome of that is. But I certainly have seen more volunteers, and I agree, the more we engage volunteerism in Roy, the better it is because we get people more active. But more importantly, it saves us money. And, and to be honest with you, Roy days in the very beginning was all volunteers. Let me repeat that, all volunteers. We need a plan. We need a plan. And how we're going to generate funds. I showed you the charts and basically said, council, that those charts basically says, we are literally flatlined on sales tax. And we need more money to operate, just to pay for, to be honest with you, just to pay for the, just pay for the increases we're taking in terms of personnel cost. We can argue all day long of whether or not what the number is. But everything I have seen, everything I've calculated basically says, Roy City needs $1.2 million of new money every year just to take care of employee wages and benefits. Repeat that. $1.2 million every year of new money, just to keep up with 163 full-time employees we have, just to keep up what's going to be in terms of their merit increases, as well as the cost of living increases. Now, let me just make it clear, council. Matt provided you and me and everybody in public on May 1st a budget. A budget. And in that budget, he was clear, he needed roughly a 9% property tax increase. And with that budget, unless Amber or Matt tell me something different, which never came out of all the workshop, every one of those employees back there and every one of the employees who are not here, including all the employees out front, will get their 2.5% COLA and get their expected merit increase. And for public safety, that's a pretty good increase. That's a pretty good sum of money. For the senior leaders in our organization, that increase is well over $5,000. Each and everyone, for the top 100, roughly a top 35, will see a $5,000 increase in salary. Just what was approved in the budget. If in fact, we can make up the difference, which the city manager said, we needed an 8, an 8.77% increase. Now, he's saying property tax increase. How we choose to come up with the $450,000 to make that difference, it certainly can be a property tax increase of 8.77. It certainly could be a modification of saying, I'm taking some money out of a fund balance. Okay. But just for the record, and I'm going to live until I'm out of office with this comment, a city council with you some in here in the past, and specifically in, in 2022, took $1.5 million out of the fund balance. And you paid to increase salaries of virtually most of the people, certainly all the people in the general fund. That happened just a couple of years ago. And you had no problem taking $1.5 million out of that general fund. It sure as it seems to me is, if somebody has an idea that says, well, all I want to do is take $250,000 out of this one, then I would suggest is, maybe you should think about that, too. Now, let's talk about kicking the can down the road. Nothing I have heard tonight addresses the issue about the men and women standing behind you. And they're one of a couple of groups in here that deals with the problem we've got. And the problem is not for the most senior people. I can show you listing after listing after listing that simply says, we are doing a pretty good job for those people who are at the top of the league. They're up there in this, in the top steps and giving them fair compensation. Why? Because the very system, the merit system, it rewards them at the top. The people who are suffering the most are those who basically have not been here longer than six or seven years. They are the ones slewing. They're the ones the majority of people are walking out of here. That has to be fixed. We can sit around here and talk all day, council, to be very blunt with you. We can sit here and just do this. But unless we come up with a solution that fixes the merit system where those usually the younger and certainly the trainees that we bring in and fix that salary problem that has been with us for years and years and years, then all of that, what we're doing today will make no difference tomorrow because you're going to face this same problem. And they're going to continue to walk out. We fix it. I've given you roadmap, I gave you the data, I gave you all the information to support what I'm saying. And as I'm asking you, somewhere in this, this issue, we simply fix the problem. So we don't have to face year after year after year of these department heads, these chiefs standing up here and saying to us over and over again, I'm losing people. Why? Because we just don't pay them enough. And who are we losing? Our youngest, our brightest, and oftentimes our best. Because they have a hope for a great future, and Roy City cannot provide it. Now, you can sit and question me, you can sit here and do whatever you want. That's up to you, that's certainly your decision. But the bottom line, facts are facts. And when they're talking about 70%, 70% of the people walking out of here, I dare say you need to ask those department heads and those supervisors how they feel when they walk out. I've had chiefs tell me that the persons walking out are crying because they don't want to leave. But they have to leave. Shouldn't be that way. That's not what we're about. Fix it. And the way to fix that is fix the most sensitive and the people who basically have been here the least time. Give them hope and give them a future. And we can do that. If you just simply, somewhere in this mix, simply says, that is what we're going to fix. Now, I've given you a roadmap of how to do that. Whether you consider that roadmap is up to you. But certainly, in my opinion, if we don't do something, we're going to find ourselves in a really difficult situation. And we continue to do, year after year after year. Now, I, I don't know, you know, you've got some ideas here. I'm treating this as the baseline, the original contract, the original agreement, the original plan. I'm looking at option one, and I'm looking at option two. Those are the three elements we have in front of us today. And at some point in time in this meeting, I'm going to ask you to vote on each of those ideas until I can get a majority. But council, what is important here is that we have a plan and we know how we're going to execute that plan. Matt has provided, under law, his responsibility and says, I've given you a budget. It is clear, it's concise, it basically gets us a bridge. And I'm asking you to take this, this physical year, between now and the next year, just try to fix the problems. Fix them so we don't have councils in the future have to deal the very issues that I've been dealing with ever since I've been elected. And certainly you have as elected official, year after year. Let's help our employees, let's sustain our abilities to basically provide great service. And we have to do that because we have to change. And if, and if the public safety people says, maybe it's time to go to a nine-step instead of a 12-step, what's that look like and what's that going to cost? Because in my opinion, they will never be competitive against Ogden, against Leighton, against Catesville, against Bountiful. And who even knows whether, what it is with the fire districts and some of the sheriff's office, unless we fix that. And we have a roadmap to do that. But you can't do that tonight. We've got to sit down and we've got to analyze it, fix it, and we have to methodically find a solution. And if your whole idea with this budget is, I'm going to fix it now so I don't have to fix it next year, it took us years to get ourselves in this situation. You cannot fix this in one time. You've got to have a plan, and you've got to make incremental changes to help make the plan work. And I think we can do that. We need to get started. But let's find a solution that's going to bring us to closure so that we, or us, or other future, future city council members don't have to keep addressing this. It breaks my heart every time I hear, and I get it, luckily HR sends me, I see over and over again, okay, a new job announcement. Why? Oftentimes not because the person retired, but more often because they just found a better job and they walked away. We've got to stop this nonsense. We've got to stop this nonsense. I'll never forget the mayors that I deal with in Davis County, when they were forced not too long ago to take on paramedic service. And I asked them, how are you going to basically find your paramedics? And they smiled at me, chief, and said, we're going to take them from you. We're going to take them from you because they can offer more money. What kind of world have we found ourselves in where that's happening? Government should never compete against government. That's not what we're about. But that's exactly what's happening over and over and over again. Unless we're willing to fix it and put Roy in a much stronger position, then you're going to be facing the same situation every flipping year. Now, that's my comments. You've heard it before. I'm not going to say much more than that. It's now your ideas in terms of what you'd like to talk about, questions you need answers to, before I go for a motion.
Okay, I have a lot to say about, a lot of things that were given in the public comment period also. I have talked with all the heads of the departments the last few weeks. And I saw some comments also on Facebook about the complex and, and how we need to raise the prices. And Michelle said, over the board, we did a 25% tax increase. I have never seen more people at a council meeting than when we decided whether we were going to keep the complex or not. More people said that it's just saved their lives. They've met friends there, they've done rehabilitation from surgeries. It's a meeting place for them. I have friends that go there every day. And the city doesn't have the complex to make money. I mean, I was, I'm good friends with the lady who ran Clearfield Pool for 25 years. She said, when we were deciding whether we were going to fix the complex, and she said, oh, the pool's the best thing you can ever have for a city. But it never makes money. But, but the city is not in the business for making money. That is, you know, we hope people will come here because of the amenities that we have. I mean, the aquatic center, I've only made it once this year, but it was at the capacity of 1,200 people. And that's all it can take. It's just a wonderful facility. Luckily, we had a grant, they put in a new tool, toy, and a new liner for both of them. But there's kids still that just rip off the soap dispensers just for the heck of it. You go in there to wash your hands, there's no soap dispensers. The vandalism at the parks. I mean, luckily, our policemen are now going and having the curfew, which they've had. But now it's become more public. And more kids is out there in the public. And now kids are knowing that if they go to the parks, that they are going to get tickets and they have to pay for it. We have cameras up, but we can't put them everywhere. They cost a lot of money. And we're, we're trying to save money. Also, the reason, I mean, I've lived, I moved to Roy in 1959 and had Roy days ever since I was little. And it was different then. And things, we didn't have to have, we did have all volunteers because that's, you didn't sue everybody when you got hurt back in the day. You just did things and you volunteered. If you got hurt, then you got hurt. And we had Roy days, was at Roy Park, and we still had the fireworks. And we do pay for part of the fireworks, but part of them, right, are donated, right? Also, Matt. And then isn't the Christmas tree lights, isn't all that money donated for that power bill?
The power bill, yes.
The power bill. I mean, the manpower to put it up, I think they start in like October or September because it takes them forever to put them up. But I've had more comments on those two than those lights. So they, they're the best around, that people enjoy those so much. We did away with the Halloween trunk-or-treat because of the money. But we do have waste management that pays for the Easter candy. But we do have to pay some staff to come that day for the Easter egg hunt. But all the things that make Roy, Roy, the salmon bake. We do have volunteers, but they can't volunteer, they can't be liable for cooking and doing things like that because we have to have workers do that, right, Michelle? Because we can't be liable for the injuries. But we do have volunteers that can help, you know, serve. And we can have volunteers to help at Roy days. But some things, city workers just have to do. But, but Roy days has gone down in budget the last two years and has saved more money. But it's, you just have to decide what kind of city you want to live in. I mean, I've lived in Roy pretty much my whole life. I have children that live in Roy, grandchildren that live in Roy. And they love it because they love the complex, the aquatic center. I'm sorry that you don't like Roy Rec. I played Roy Rec my whole life. I coached my kids in Roy Rec. I coached my grandkids in Roy Rec. And I think having the Recreation Department and having a kid be on a team, first of all, you get friends, you learn responsibility, you learn sportsmanship, you learn a skill that maybe you'll go to school or maybe get a, you know, a scholarship sometime. But I think the athletics for kids are so much better because it drives me crazy that kids are always on their cell phone or playing video games now. I'm, I hope they're all out playing sports and playing games. All those things are what make Roy a great city to live in. I understand that we do need more businesses. And I want you to know, we do have businesses on the horizon that are looking to come to Roy City. And we do, a lot of, we have a lot of housing that's coming. And I know a lot of people don't like a lot of housing, but we need those property taxes. I have met with Chief Williams, I can't tell you how many times. And he would meet with any of you to go over what it means to keep his employees. Fire department is like a family. And they live together for days at a time. And every time one leaves, they have And every time one leaves, they have to get another family member in and then earn their trust. And they have to learn the skills, it's on-the-job training. And same with the police department. I can't even imagine the things that they go through and then have to go home to their families and try to erase the horrible things that they had witnessed that day in their jobs. I don't think we paid them enough for, for what they do. I could never unsee some of the things that they have witnessed and seen. And I want to do everything that I can to keep our employees in here, keep the feel of Roy City here, keep all the things that we have that make Roy a great place to live and why I have stayed here my whole life. And my children too. And I support the 28% tax increase because I have talked with Chief Williams. And if we do not support that tax increase, then most, all those firemen back there, most of them have already been offered jobs to go to other cities. And if that's what we want and we want substandard service in this city and with our police department, then that's what we're going to get. And to talk about our upper management, when you look up what they make and you bring up Gina Butters, who's a very good friend of mine, that, she might get paid that, but that's not her wage. They, that's their benefits, their retirement, and all of that is included. And I, I think she deserves every penny of it for what she has to go through to run this school district where I work at. But anyway, I just, I feel that very strong that we have to work towards, like Bob said, Mayor said, maybe paying, you know, having the salary merit system, maybe we can fix that and change that. Can't do that this year, but that's something we look forward to. We've already taken 7.5% cuts. I mean, Chief Gwynne, he doesn't have enough bullets to practice because he had a cut in that. And, and I know that even though we do have the fire department, we train them, but if they leave within a year, is it a year, they do have to pay some of that money back from training them, is that right?
If that, if they go to school, if we put them through A and T or paramedics, they pay the city's back.
Okay, then they have to pay back. But I know Ogden City was saying, "Hey, $7,000 bonus, right, come over here to my city." What wife would not tell their husband, "You're going to Ogden City?" I know, I would have told my husband that because of the prices. But I think of, my taxes will go up $8.75 a month. I mean, I spend that much at McDonald's. And I, and I know it's hard for some people and I know, but you have to figure out what you're willing to pay to keep our city what it is. And I know that it is tough for some people and like on the back of your tax statement, it has all the benefits and the people that don't have enough money can help. And I know even in Brian's neighborhood, he talks about his neighbors. I've talked to some of his neighbors and I've had them tell me, "You give me the names and the addresses of those people that cannot pay their taxes." And I've had other several neighborhoods tell me this. "I will give them the $100 to pay their taxes to keep our city as safe and a good place to live." And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. By the way, that's not a solicitation for you to step up with the $100, okay? We are not in that business.
Right.
But, but we'll leave that to their judgment. Diane, you want to make comments or ask questions?
Sure, I'd like to, and maybe we can have a little bit of interaction as well. One of the first things I wanted just to clarify, and by the way, Brian, thank you for putting in the relief programs in the packet because those are very important. One of the things I did want to mention is that the circuit breaker program actually doesn't minimize or require the less than $11,000 in liquid assets. The abatement program does and the circuit breaker doesn't. You can have more than one home and they don't count your assets. So often, so go and check into that. Call that number he gave you because a lot of those programs can actually be combined. The veterans, the, the other disability programs, they can be combined. So, so don't forget, call that number if there's a problem at all. So I did want to at least mention that. I think that, you know, we've certainly brought up a lot of, you know, important points and, and how do we get to that end point? I think that we definitely do need to come up with a more complete plan. The mayor has outlined some very good approaches for us that is going to take time. Unfortunately, we can't take away all life sustenance from our staff while we're waiting for that time. So we do have to do something now to help them. Now, we know it's not going to be the full amount, but if we can give them a little something while we are trying to rework this system, I think that's absolutely critical. And I believe that's where this tax percent increase comes in. Now, if we take a look at the percentages, you know, that little flow chart talks about some options. Now, the one that I'm tending towards is scenario seven. And thanks, Amber, very much for putting all those scenarios out because it made it much clearer on what we need to look at. If we use that $100,000 of fund balance for true urgent one-time needs, then I believe that's important because that will give us that little extra boost we need in our wages. If we do a 28% tax increase, which was, is our max, that gives us, now let me just back up. If you recall the, the general benchmark number, and now I know it's, it's our best guess right now because it's going to take some more work, but we're still going to use that. Over average, it's a 14% decrease of median. If we take the 28%, that would get us at least to a 5.64. So we're not 14%, you know, we didn't get up to 14%, but we got up to 5.64. Now, if we can use some of these other options that are there, you know, have the, have the city manager work with our department heads. Chief Williams has already offered some options there. We could actually possibly bump that at least for fire from a 40%, or excuse me, from a 5.64% increase up to, you know, it would actually be probably like around maybe a 9%. So that gives us some room. Now, if we feel that that is too much, some people are, have, and we appreciate your comments so much, helping us know where you fit on that. Some people have definitely gone for, and they say, "We really want the 28%. We need it." Some people have been somewhere in between. And I think that's where some of our discussion needs to come. Where do we, where do we find we need to land? The 23% is probably the lowest one we need to even consider because that puts us at just 25% of that 14. So that gives us like 3.5% increase. And boy, I just can't see us doing anything less than a quarter of the way. You know, if we do 25%, then we get it up just a little bit more. You know, we're up about a third of the way of that 14% deficit. So that's the conversation I hope we're going to be able to have is discuss, you know, if, if we're going to go for a percent increase, where are we going to fit with that? I did have one question as part of my comments. You know, I think maybe Chief Williams and maybe Chief Gwynne, you could also address that. You know, there's been this concern about, we definitely know we need to address the incoming wages. We know we need to do that. But sometimes it looks like maybe we don't need to address the middle or the higher staff. And so for us to help make a decision, how much traction can we take on that? Is there really a difference? Can we really just focus on that? Do we need to do it? Maybe I'll start with Chief Williams. Would you mind telling me a little bit of how that impacts the staff if we only really focus on addressing the lower end, please?
Thanks, Councilor Mayor. I, I think in theory it sounds good because it is, it is the area that's targeted. I appreciate the mayor focusing on that. What I anticipate is, yes, we have two-thirds of firefighters are below five years. And I think we have to consider who's doing the training. It's the mid-year and it's the senior firefighters who are training the younger ones. What I fear is, if we follow that, what the mayor has proposed of the one to seven, my fear is, there are jobs open. I think we, we look at, yes, it's the one to five, one to seven. But there are also many jobs above that from seven to 15. And I think if we think that they won't, people won't leave in that tier, I think we're mistaken. And so I, I'm not a proponent of that. I think it would actually escalate people of leaving. I think what you would see is, and I'm just going to take into my personal account, I would say, "I'm going to work here at Roy. I'm going to come in and get the experience. They're going to train me and at five years, I'm going to start looking for a higher-paid job." So I, I, I would not recommend that would be the area we'd follow. And it also would create compression. I think Matt and Amber would see this also, that you would see a compression, that you'd see the one-to-five-year guys catching up with that other mid-year and what do they do, what value do they bring? Maybe informally, you would definitely see a morale issue. And those who stay here, who are loyal, what message does that send to them? Now, I know this is the main problem that we're focusing on, but I would not recommend that would be the approach. That's, that's my opinion on it. So, Matt?
I'm actually going to concur with the fire chief. Couple things. One, right, we talk about value. And I'm afraid that the message we send is, "If you've been here longer, you're stuck and so you're going to be valued less." I don't necessarily believe that's the opinion of the council, but that can be the appearance. Also, when we talk about the discrepancy across the city, it's 14% is the mean. In my department alone, the discrepancy is anywhere between 9% to 23%, right? So it gets a little bit more prescriptive when you get more granular looking at the data. So I'm looking at the salary survey right now. When we talk about line staff, the variance from where they are, are at now to where we want to get them at a minimum is 3.8%. But when you go to sergeant, that variance actually moves to 14.27%, which is actually the opposite of what we believe is going on. That's not to say that that isn't the average citywide, but in my department, the exact opposite is going on. You're actually being compensated better already coming in as opposed to being senior.
And I think, Chief, to your point about that is because you're getting 3.75% in steps every year until you get to the 12. That's not the case with the general employees. They start out at 2% and they don't get to 2.5, which is the max, until they get seven years into their career. And so unlike all the other cities that I've looked at, setting aside public safety, but all of the other cities I've looked at, none of them does what Roy City does. Starts them low in the step percentage and then builds. They either start them high, which is what Ogden does, or they keep them standardized, pretty much what South Ogden does. And so on the general employee side, the merit system fails them, which is creating the problem. What's failing you, and I think the losses, has nothing to do with that, has more to do with that. It takes too long for you to get to the top step. And if they can go to another city like Ogden and get there in nine steps or eight steps, they got the full pay, okay, a lot sooner than you're getting. The answer is not, okay, in your case, about the pay as much as trying to get compensated to the step process. That's where the attraction is. That's where I would go. So we have to fix that.
I agree, but to your point, like my different, my, my apartment, Chief Williams' department's going to be treated different than any other departments.
Much different.
I would also add though, and to your point, in Riverdale, they have like an 18-step. And when I talk to the chief, they still have an 18-step program on paper, but they hire everyone in their police department at step six.
Yeah.
Right? And so...
It's crazy.
Right? We're trying to compare apples to apples, but it gets awfully difficult when you're doing that.
And I spent the last four or five days, in fact, probably a week, going through that salary survey. But may I just make a point so it's clear for the record? That salary survey came to us as a draft. It was never sanctified. It was certainly never approved and it certainly didn't come to you formally. It came to you in a large part because these two gentlemen, this gentleman and that gentleman basically says, "We're losing 70% of our workforce in three years." And to really understand that, we needed to see what the salary survey said. And when we did, it becomes pretty apparent. Firemen and public works people were walking. And the only way you're going to fix that is get into the data to find a solution. And when you're going up there, as I heard in a testimony, we're paying some of our beginners $17.17 an hour to start. I'm not so sure you can get a better pay if you in fact went to McDonald's. And yet we're putting them in front of a fire truck and says, "Drive it." We're basically putting them with heavy equipment that says, "You need to start digging holes." The bottom line of the problem is we're underpaying our most early new employees. And we've got to fix that. And the salary survey defined that absolutely clear. But there are other big holes in that salary survey that has to be addressed. And to suggest, and I'll just be blunt with you, to suggest in fact, as a city manager, I'm going to pick on the city manager because I can, his pay is a certain pay. But his counterpart, his counterpart in Leighton is $117 an hour salary. $117 an hour, almost if not twice what he's getting paid. You have to ask the question, "Why?" Does it have anything to do with the fact is, is it in Roy, it's 38,000 residents and eight square miles? And in Leighton, it's 84,000 people and 21 or 23 square miles? There's going to be some things that should be included in the assessment to define what appears to be a fair and equal pay. That salary survey did not take that in consideration. And the bottom line would be is it needs to. To suggest for one thing, this is we're going to use the cotton-picking city administrator in, in Ogden in terms of that comparison, knowing perfectly well that their former government is a council mayor former government, and it is not the city administrator, it is not the city manager that runs that city, as it is in Roy. That city is run by an elected mayor. It's a fundamentally different, but it is in those calculations. Why? It's a different type of government. Or to look at North Ogden and simply says, "Well, we got a city administrator." Yes. Pays this amount of money. Yes. But oh, by the way, he also happens to be the city attorney. Yes. Why would we even include that in the calculations? Because it's fundamentally different. My point to you, counsel, is it is absolutely clear that the persons, the people we need to work at are certainly the ones where we're bleeding. That needs to happen. And I propose to you to simply fix that now and then spend the rest of the time between now and June 31st to change how we basically put our step program so we can keep our employees. But you cannot fix this in one year. You cannot fix this at one time. It's going to take some time to get through this. And as long as the employees are being safe, if they're basically getting their 2.5 collar, as long as they're getting the 3.75 plus in terms of merit, as long as they're getting their 2.5 merit, then we can move this along and they're not going to lose much until we get it right. But if you don't fix this, then we'll have the same conversation. In fact, you will have the same conversation next year. So let's fix it. But nothing I've heard so far says anything about a plan to fix this. It just kicks the can, Randy, down the road until somebody else has to step up and deal with it. And so throwing money at it might be fun, it might be easy, certainly it's going to make a lot of people under pretty happy, but you're going to face the same issue until you fix the problem. And my opinion is, focus on the problem. So let's get that right.
So the salary survey wasn't actually a survey, it was a benchmark. Let's just level set.
But it is.
So, because again, the salary survey that we've done historically was done more exhaustively and we've done it like twice before. In terms of like the whole adage of kicking the can down the road, a lot of what, again, Chief Williams is doing and what we're allowing potentially, is to go through and address some of the issues structurally within the fire department. Maybe with the two headcount, we can somehow collapse the steps. Or again, that, that's, that's what's going to be between Chief Williams and, and, and City Manager Andrews, is to try to figure out what is the best path forward with, you know, what you're willing to take and, you know, sacrifice that you're, in terms of your headcount. And so that, I guess, address, and again, that's what we don't know. That, that is completely and totally up to their discretion in terms of how they go through and address it. And that goes through at least perfunctorily, takes and addresses what's happening with, potentially within fire. And again, we know this is going to be a multi-year thing that we have to go through and address. And so this is not the first time that we're going to be having these types of difficult conversations.
But what, but what you're doing and you're saying is, "So let's lead out, we'll just take the money from the taxpayers, we'll get this big pool of money, then we'll figure out how we're going to spend it." My comment to you would be is, we should have a plan before we basically go up there and dip into the, into the property tax issue again. I mean, right now, you're talking 28%. And I've yet to hear anything that simply says, "Tell me how that 28% is going to be spent."
Well, no, no.
Except it's going to be paid for employees.
Well, exactly. And that is 100% what the property tax will go towards is to pay for our employees who are undercompensated.
And how are they going to get paid? And how, what plan have you laid in motion that basically defines that?
If you look at scenarios, say, seven and eight, as I say, it lays out.
It just basically says you're going to give them the money to fix it. What are you going to fix?
Well, why don't we talk about this four or five years ago instead of just waiting?
Why don't we talk about it in January and February?
Or, or, I mean, eight years, you've been the mayor for eight years. Why didn't, did... Why didn't, did you not feel this was a problem?
Because for the first time in eight years, to be honest with you, Ann, the bottom line is, is the document was absolutely clear and this budget said this. First time, 70% loss in the fire department, 71% lost in public works. Finally, the hard numbers were coming out, what I've been hearing rumors about for a long time. And the bottom line would be is somebody stepped up and says, this is a problem. And what did I do? I told each of you, I says, let me do a deep dive. And I did exactly that. And I shared that deep dive information with you. And I shared the deep dive with you in terms of what my opinion of the survey said. And I says, this is the facts as I see them. Now, what I would hope you to say is, you know what, Mayor? Let's go ahead and let's do a deep dive and let's flush this out and let's find a solution. And bring every one of these departments in and that city manager in and sit down and say, we're going to have a solution before we walk into another budget meeting and we're going to find answers. But then the first thing we're going to do is we're going to stop the bleeding. Chief said it as well to you as he did to me. Decision that comes out of this meeting could well depend whether some of those people back on the wall back there walk away.
Right.
And so, okay, but if we have a plan and we fix the bleeding first, maybe we can save them.
Just out of curiosity, did inflation not happen between 2017 to 2021 when the, whoever was on the current city council did not raise a single percentage tax increase? Because again, 2015, 16, we did a 37%. And then we stuck our head in the sand and said inflation isn't a thing, but inflation is the gift that keeps on giving.
But inflation wasn't the issue then. I am telling you, we had our.
So did inflation stop?
We had our coffers full, Randy. Our coffers were full. I'm indicating to you is a city council basically took $1.5 million out of the budget in 2022 and paid it back.
I was, that was the first night I was on the council.
Bingo.
I, again, knowing what I know now, I do not believe I would honestly make that decision.
I don't disagree, but I sent you papers. I told you what was happening. I ask you and beg you.
And that's why we move forward.
$750,000.
Yeah, we can't do nothing about that.
This look forward. So the bottom line would be is there were some decisions. I will tell you, there are probably some wrong decisions to go back probably 20 years. But the bottom line is there was enough money in the coffers to pay for the increases without a property tax increase.
But now there isn't.
And now there isn't. So how do we deal with that and how do we fix the problem?
Well, I'd like to maybe ask either Amber or Matt a question. When we talk about using the merit and the COLA, that is in the current budget, and then we talk about that for, that, you know, what we think is about a 14% below median, is that 14% below median in addition to the merit and COLA? Or is that including? If you could just clarify that for us, please.
So the benchmarking was taken from a system that most cities subscribe to. That benchmarking was done last October, so nothing in this current year's budget would have any effect on that, meaning other cities, COLAs, merits, anything would have nothing to do with that data.
And real quick, just to kind of level set, social security cost of living adjustments. 2017, 2%. 2018, 2.8%. 2019, 1.6%. 2020, 1.3%. 2021, 5.9%. 2022, 8.7%. 2023, 3.2%. 2024, 2.5%.
Agreed. And if you look in terms of what the merit program is supposed to do and the steps, it's increasing the pay based on the merit to try to keep pace with that. When we included a couple of years ago to include also the COLA, we have employees that are getting 5%, 6%, close to 7% increases to try to help them keep up with that. Not all the time we were here, did the council approve both a merit increase as well as a COLA increase. What they did is now we're involving both of them. I'm not saying that the employees are well compensated. I think there's improvements to be made. But I am telling you right now, my research tells me the youngest, the brightest, the most future for this city, they are not getting compensated. They need to be fixed. Now, if you've got a plan of how you plan to do that, then I suggest to you is pass whatever property tax you're going to pass and then get off your butts and find a solution to fix this problem so we're not facing this again next time. Because right now I've not heard a plan, and to be honest with you, I'm not hearing anything that talking about fixing it. All you're going to do is put a Band-Aid on it, or I'll use your acronym, Randy, kick the can down the road so we can face it again next year. We have thrown lots of money at the personnel in this city, year after year after year. And the problem continues. Why? Because the problem is not being fixed. We're only putting a Band-Aid on it. I'm asking you, based on all the data that I have provided to you, fix the problem. That has to be the number one priority. You consider where you want to go with that.
This is kind of like tendon surgery. Sometimes when you're going to fix a tendon, you can't go to surgery that day. Sometimes you have to put a few sutures in and keep that wound clean. And then what you do is then you find out how things are going, you get more studies done, and then you go into surgery a few days later and then you can fix the tendon. We must do something now, and I believe we do have a solution. We have at least a benchmark that gives us an idea of that. We can start with that. That is absolutely a plan that we can use. We can use the information. Mayor, you gave us some wonderful information on which ones to add and which ones to take out. You've done a very deep dive on that benchmark, but we have it now. We can use it at least for now because we cannot, we cannot just leave that tendon open and hope that everything's going to be fine. We've got to suture it up and then we can do that hard work. We can go in and decide what that merit system change needs to be, but we can't wait to do that. We have to make some change now. And it's going to take us, the beginning of the year, that's going to probably take us till next budget year to get some of that all filled out. We can't leave people hanging without IV fluids. We can't let them just go dehydrating on the vine with nothing. We have to do something now. And I believe that's where the 28% increase gets us. It gets us a little bit. It doesn't get us a lot, but maybe it gives us a few drops of water in that IV fluid so they can make it through until we can actually get them from the triage center to the ICU or till we can get them to the trauma center. Because right now it's a trauma and we've got to get them to the trauma center and we can't ignore it otherwise. And I believe that's where we use the plan.
I don't disagree with you, but let me just ask a couple of questions. Did anything in the budget that you read, the budget that says we need nine and a half percent property taxing, did it say anything about canceling Roy days? Did it say anything about we're not going to have the programs we're having? Everything that's in there stays as it is. So the status quo is in fact stable. That budget, if you approve it, gives us enough to pay the COLAs of all the employees and the merit increases of all the employees that are eligible. Everybody benefits. It just basically gets us where we need to go. And now we can work up a plan to be able to execute. And I ask you specifically, counsel, take a little bit of money out of the fund balance. You said 100,000. You said it sounds good. Brian says, give me 250,000. That will work. Take a little bit of money out of the fund balance to fix the bleeding on the lowest paid employees. We can fix that by January 1st. Done. Then we can take on the more difficult issues about making changes to the entire step program of both the general employees and the public safety, which have to be fixed if we're going to make it competitive.
You know, a thousand, $100,000 is actually really justified with our principle. Our principle is it needs to be used for urgent one-time uses. And so that 100,000, but if you think about 100,000 and you divide that, let's say by, what do we have, 161 at least full-time employees? Let's see, because you know, it's only, you know, it's 20 drops per, isn't it 20 drops per second when we're trying to do our IV flow rates? Aren't we trying to do something like that? Let's see where that gets us. So that gets us, if we only did 100,000, that would get us at about 620, you know? So that's going to be a little bit of a help. Now, where does that fit in for percentages? Now, you know, I do think that it's better for us to take 1% of that COLA and put it towards it because I think that will help with that wage. And I do believe we have a solution. You're right, we haven't talked about the Roy days cuts, but we have talked about other cuts. We've talked about some staffing cuts. We've also talked, the other cool part of this whole plan is that we have got department heads willing to take some of their positions and put that money towards it. And I believe if we allow the department heads to have some responsibility for their wages, their staff wages, they know where the innuendos are. They know where it can possibly go here and there. So we need to combine that plan. The plan needs to be combined from the benchmark, which you have already given us information to help us fine tune that, and we need to allow department heads to take what they have, combine it together. Now, we still are maybe at max, only going to get about halfway up where they need to be. But that's where the next step will come. The next step will be, we're going to do a deep dive, we're going to do the step, possibly a step, but we're at least going to investigate it. But we have to do something more than wait because we know the 14% is in addition to the COLA, in addition to COLA and merit. We can't just ignore the 14%. We have to address it. If we only do COLA and merit, we have ignored the 14% completely.
So Sophie, Sophie, what do you think?
But all I'm saying to Diane is this.
You don't want to say anything?
Okay? Let me just make it clear. The real issue is not about trying to find a solution. That will come. My biggest concern is, is you're going to spend a significant amount of that money, whatever that extra money is going to be to solve this problem, on the highest paid employees in our city. And my frustration I have with that is in fact, and I'll just give you some numbers. You would like numbers, let me give you some hard numbers, okay?
I'm ready.
35% of all of the cost to pays for employee costs go to 20% of the employees. 35%. And if you take all of the employees today, the salary is over $100,000. $100,000. Every one of them, there's 39 of them out of the 163. And they're going to get a $5,000 increase just on the COLA that's in the budget and just on their step increase that they haven't reached the top. $5,000 a year increase. Now, I'm not saying they don't deserve it and they certainly need to be part of the plan, but that $5,000 you're paying for every senior employee up here, particularly the top 39, should be going to those individuals on the back up there who basically are the least paid. And if we're going to keep them, let's focus that money on where the money is going to make the best benefit. That's the answer. And if we get to the solution that keeps us our payers, our older, okay, more experienced people, perfect, we'll get there. And if that means we're going to do a step change or we're going to do some changes with percentages, perfect, we can do that. But stop the bleeding. And if you don't take the money that you've got and focus it where it's needed, I'm telling you, by the time you get to this next year, you will not fix the problem. All you've done is dumped the money into the highest paid employees who basically, for the most part, are already competitive at their high steps. If you look at the data, it's pretty darn clear. I pointed that over and over and over again. So I'm asking you to simply say, use whatever money you basically decide you think is important, you're going to basically pull out of property tax, then fix where the bleeding is. And certainly I don't disagree with what the chief is saying. He says, man, if you don't do this right, you're going to alienate most of the people in the organization because some will and some won't. Some will get caught up in a compression. Hold your breath, yes. But you're going to fix the problem. And if you don't fix the problem, then the people are going to walk. And that's the problem. You keep telling me, I want the best of the best. I want to make sure we keep our people here. I want the most experience in here. But you're not talking about anything with substance that talks about focusing on where you're going to retain the skills of the individuals. And, and to be honest with you, chief, chief, every one of the department heads, I don't think you're hiring idiots when you bring somebody in. I think there's some qualification they have to have. I think they'll do the best they can and they're going to get trained. But by the same token is, I can't deny Ann's point. He simply says, if I have an emergency, I want the best here. If I'm going to have a great sporting program, I want the best there. And to be very honest with you, which is probably the worst thing that can happen, if I can't flush my toilet, bottom line's going to be, I want the best. But you can't keep the best in unless you fix the bleeding. And when the, when the document made it very clear, 70% over the last three have walked, then focus on the problem.
Well, I think that, you know, you've got to really, I think you've already brought up the, the proper way, Mayor, because that's what the benchmark does. The benchmark shows us that we have more deficits at the bottom. So when we use that benchmark, it will say, it will do exactly what you're talking about. And so I think that's, that's going to be the solution you've been teaching us and training us to do. You know, the other thing, I know Amber wasn't too excited about it, but we could revisit our creative 1.5% COLA because that would shift things a little bit. Mind you, probably take it off the table now, but I think we are reaching exactly what you're recommending, Mayor.
Correct. And that's another thing too, is when you look at the scenarios that we've painted, we've actually pulled back the COLA. We've actually downgraded it by an entire percentage point. So it's not going to the top tier. It's, I mean, it still is.
I read the document, I'm saying to you, Randy, and I don't disagree with you, but if you don't keep the momentum in terms of every one of the employees, in terms of the 2.5, which is just the standard by which they have established, that I'm indicating to you is, next time we have this conversation, you're going to have all the other employees now behind. Right now, I'm telling you, the top of the group is not the problem. I'm telling you, the lower paid employees is the problem. Fix that. If you strip away a percent out of that, then you're going to have to find a way to make that part up as well. So stripping it away is not necessarily the right answer. The bottom line was, how are you going to fix the bottom part of the employee list who basically need an increase in pay? That's what you need to be focusing on. And I've not heard anything about how you're going to do that. Now, maybe at this point, Diane or Randy, you don't need it. Maybe you're simply saying is, hey, that's, that's Matt's problem. Let him figure this thing out. And you certainly have a right to do that. You can just simply says, I'm going to pass a 28% property tax increase and Matt, it's your problem. You fix it and report back to me. Okay? You can certainly have a right to do that. The law is very clear. All you have to do is in this law and this tax, truth and taxation, it says, tell the public how the money is going to be spent. And the fact of the matter is, you can keep it simple or you can keep it complex. Me, I'd like to provide the public a little more detail than just simply says, pass a 28% property tax increase and call it a day.
And so Mayor, you're purporting that we just do the 8.77% tax increase and use the $560,000 one-time fund?
My proposal to you was simple. You didn't prepare that budget. Matt prepared that budget. He has now taken absolutely no responsibility for the outcome of that budget. It's his budget. Law says he has to provide it to you. He wants 9% to be able to make this work. 9% pays every one of these employees their COLA and gets their merit. That's what it says. Take a little bit of money out of the fund balance and use that money to go ahead and start fixing the bleeding. Because you've got 35 employees in this organization who are sitting on positions right now that are bleeding. Fix that. Raise those wages from $17.17 an hour to the request being 1938, if I remember right. Give them the $2 an hour increase to stop the bleeding. Then they're competitive. You can do that.
With the one-time money is what you're saying? Use the one-time money for that?
Then come back.
And then what do we do?
Then fix the entire system. Spend this year, this physical year to get in. Chief provided a nine-step solution that will cost the city 300,000 and every one of his employees for $300,000 in a nine-step will in fact benefit.
And you mentioned that it's going to be very expensive. So now we're kicking the can down the road for the current plus.
In the proposal, Diane, I said this. In the proposal, Diane, I said this. Matt and I have talked this over for years. We says, we cannot have a salary survey every year for everybody. It cannot happen. You cannot afford that. But if you break the organization up into two departments and says, these departments are gonna get it, we're gonna change that this year, and pass a resolution that says, every city council will break it up in a three-year period, and that becomes the law, and that's what we do, then every three years, every one of the employees know darn well they're gonna get that baseline reset. And more importantly, along the way, they're gonna get their COLA and they're gonna get their merits. It was not a problem for you, council, to go up there and simply pass a resolution that says, we're gonna have a truth and taxation meeting every year. And that's what the law says today. Take that to the next step. Tell them you're gonna have, basically gonna have, a salary survey in every department in this city at least once in three years. That gives you the breathing room to go ahead and have a plan, and it gives you the resources that you can pay. What's troubling here is you're hearing this number about 14%. And I almost bet you somewhere in the middle of that 14% is coming from a salary survey that basically still is a draft.
You have to start somewhere.
Well, what I'm saying is, then if 14% is the number, what happened if it's only 10% or 8%?
Then we would even be further ahead though.
But find the answer.
We will.
Before you basically start taking the taxes. Get a solution. And if you can't fix it in this fiscal year, then fix what you can in this fiscal year and fix it again, what you need to do in the other fiscal years until you get the problem resolved. You didn't cause this problem. Randy, you said it best. This happened over the years. What the crap have we been doing? So don't take responsibility, you said you have to fix it on your watch. Just take responsibility, says, I'm going to make a difference. And you're gonna fix it. And you're gonna fix it. If it takes two years or three years to fix, you're gonna fix it. But you're gonna stop the bleeding. I think if you'll take that approach, you'll find it much easier.
When you talk about the expense for the step system and you were saying the $300,000, so it's gonna cost us next year about $300,000 to shift over this step is kind of a ballpark? And so that would be a 6% tax increase just for the fire department? Now, if we use one-time money, that's an 11% tax increase for next year because we don't really have anything on the horizon revenue-wise for probably two years at least. And so then, if, it might be more, if we do step system different on the other systems, we don't know if it's 300,000, maybe it's two. But right now, that already gives us, what, a 17% tax increase for next year? That's, and then we still haven't even addressed wages this year. That means we're putting off wages, you know, this year. I mean, I guess because I come from a different medical world.
But I'm looking at it from a different perspective from this standpoint. Is you're basing your reasoning based on information you can't confirm?
Correct.
And because you have not confirmed it, you're simply taking, poke at it and says, give me 28%. I'm quite surprised you didn't say 48%.
Well, you know, that probably would've helped us more. But I think we wanna be reasonable because we have citizens. We want, it depends on which problem. We're trying to solve two problems here. And one of the most important things is, we're trying to have balance. We have staff that are working with us and we have citizens that are working really hard to help us with this. And so we have to do it stepwise. It's just like you said, we can't wait a whole year to take a step. The merit and the COLA is not sufficient. We still have a big gap. And we have got to, if you're talking seriously about stopping the bleeding, you have to use that metaphor or that analogy a little further. We can't wait a year. We just can't wait a year. You still have to do a little more than pressure on the wound. You have to give some sustenance.
Diane, I'm suggesting to you this. Look at all the data.
Okay, got it.
The data basically says to you is, is that we've got employees in this organization that are making $150,000 in salary. The person we just retired, walked out of this organization with a salary and benefit of a quarter of a million dollars a year. You wanna tell me, okay, that a person working in Roy City that makes a quarter of a million dollars in benefits and salary is not making enough money? And oh, by the way, we should pay them more? I'm telling you right now is, look at the data. The data's basically telling me, we have enough people in this organization, the top of the list, who fundamentally are making more than they need to make.
Sounds great, Mayor.
Then why do we going up there and benefiting them?
That's where the balance comes in.
Why shouldn't we basically take care of the people at the bottom?
We have a life. Didn't you just say that like Matt makes less than Layton? I mean, I know for a fact that a lot of our upper management could go to another city and make a lot more than they make here at Roy City.
We act, we act like $100,000 is a lot of money in this day and age. I have not made less than $100,000 in over a decade.
But I'm, here's not what I'm saying to you. What I'm saying to you would be is, is that what's the data tell you? If you're gonna look at apples-to-apples relationship, I'm saying is, look at the apples. But if you're gonna go up there and basically says, I'm including people who basically have a completely different assignment and says, we're gonna include this in the analysis, I'm telling you right now is, is that the data is wrong.
Well, I think that's where your last thing is very helpful for us, Mayor.
Let's use it.
Let's use it, but we can use it.
Before we get into the meeting.
Well, we can use it. I know it won't be 20 minutes before. We will be using it in addition to the benchmark. It will be combined. It will take us a few weeks. Maybe it will take us four to six weeks to finalize that. But that's where it comes from. We have data and that's where we have a benchmark. And that's why we know we're only going to part of the benchmark because you've already helped us with extensive data.
Okay. You're focused on 28%. Let's see where the conversation goes.
Brian and Sophie, speak and then let's vote.
First, on the horizon, we do have things working in our favor. Ann mentioned some of them a couple of weeks ago. But I'm gonna remind everybody, we had Wendy's recently reopened. We'll have them for the whole year next year. Wells Fargo, they're being built. And in addition, we know a second tenant is gonna be going in there. We just don't know who.
Right.
We have a 17 town home development on Sandridge Drive that has already been approved.
Right.
We've got a 59 town home development on 6,000 south that's already moving forward. Based on those numbers, that's probably a $230 million project.
For next year.
But if we talk a look at the taxes.
Nothing will come in for that for two years. And what did we decide Wendy's would bring in $4,000 for a year?
Wendy's, when you look at the national data for Wendy's, the average store does $1.9 million worth of sales. And so the ROI portion of that would be about $10,000 a year of taxes, which is great. But what that means is, if we were going to actually have Wendy's help us with that one-time money of $560,000, they would have to sell $112 million of hamburgers. Or that means they would have to sell about 25 million hamburgers, which would require every man, woman, and child to buy two hamburgers every day from Wendy's to make up that $560,000. But the key is, it would be much more cost-effective if we could just take that money and put it towards the tax increase because we are so happy Wendy's is here. It's just that the amount is smaller than what we need right now.
No, I understand all of that, I do. But the thing is, is the, why are we using so much money to feather the nest of our reserve fund? Why are you guys so against using a land sale during this year for this year's budget?
Well, Matt, you need to address that. Why is it not good practice? You and Amber, I've talked to you about this.
I think it was, it was addressed also in public comment as well. It's not good budget practice to use one-time funds on ongoing expenses.
Right.
This idea came up in the first work session of the year back in January. It is possible. I said it was possible and I said what it is doing is kicking the can down the road. But you can choose to do that. But it's not good budget.
Well, and every person that had to do with finances that got up here today said, it's not a good idea to do that.
Yeah, but instead we attach everybody that lives in the city to a 28% tax hike.
To a $9 a month. $9 a month, Randy, I mean, Brian. I know $9 a month, I guess, doesn't, I mean, isn't that much to me. It's probably a lot more to other people. I mean, I'm on social security. I will retire one day. I don't wanna keep raising the taxes, but I don't wanna lose our employees neither.
I know neither.
And so I can afford $9 a month. Like Mary Lynn said, I won't go to Maverick and get two Dr. Peppers or whatever. I mean, you think of what people have and they spend their money on, you know, their cable, their cell phones, their, I mean, every little thing. And there's some that don't have that. I agree. They probably just have antennas or might not even have a TV. But everybody I have talked to in the city, and I've talked to a lot of people, they're like, I'm willing to pay $9, $10 a month and pay a 28% tax increase. And I said, and hopefully next year, you know, we do have some things on the horizon and hopefully we won't have to start out with 11% tax increase already by using that $560,000.
The $20,000 will never come off.
So.
Never.
I mean, I feel bad that.
It will never come off.
Yeah, well.
But that's the thing is, you're also.
No, it will never though come off.
But the $560,000 in one-time funds also doesn't come off because it's one-time. That isn't an immediate 11% tax increase.
No, are we, I'm gonna ask all of you. Are we in an emergency?
No.
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 We're losing 70% of our, of our fire programs?
Well, it's emergency if we don't raise the taxes, we're gonna lose the chief and probably all them guys back there. That is an emergency if we don't raise the taxes for $9 a month rather than take the money out. What if we have a catastrophic emergency, you know, like a fire or an earthquake or something? And then we don't have that money for our infrastructure. We don't know what the future brings. And that's why Matt and Amber said, we've gotta keep that emergency fund. I mean, I know Clinton City just raised their taxes a lot just to build back up their emergency fund because it's so low. It's important to have a good emergency fund. Right, Matt? Right, Amber?
We don't disagree.
Right.
The important thing. It's set at 18%. The city council says we will not go below that. And it can't, I think the law says, Amber, 35%? It's a max. So that's the, that's the area where we're actually operating in. I think to Brian's point, we're struggling trying to figure out exactly why we got $26 million sitting in reserve funds and what is it doing for us?
But only 4.8 is addressable in the general fund.
Yeah, but, but part of that is capital projects. And the question is, who puts that money into capital projects? And it's not just the fire trucks. It's certainly not just the money set aside for the parks. That's, that's a lot of money sitting right now into, really into that bulk of that reserve that we have to ask the question is, what are we doing with it? And I think the comment that came out of the testimonies here says, we got a fire station that needs to be replaced someday.
Right.
So that's part of the planning ahead.
And that, yeah, that is planning ahead. That's why we raised the water $10 a month to put infrastructure on 3,500. And as far as I know, we're only losing five houses on 3,500.
All right, I think it's Sophie's turn.
There's 227 that's been impacted. That's the main confusion. Now, to your point, Ann, how many of those actually are completely taken? We don't know. But we think that there will be a few that will be completely taken. But there are 227 properties that will be impacted on 3,500 widening.
Right. Well, last I heard from Matt, didn't you say right now they're only taking five houses?
If they're doing what they're planning to do, and I got a group that just got the letter yesterday, UDOT is meeting with them through their acquisition process now, and they're doing 10 a month. And hopefully getting through 220, they'll have it all done before they start construction on the 27, or, yeah, 2027. But it is an impact and you know that. And the impact obviously is going to be directly associated with property value. And anytime they mess with property, the bottom line is, is that Roy City has a tendency to lose.
And when we, when you bring that up about planning ahead, I think one of the glaring problems we haven't fully addressed from some of the past work sessions is, we have nothing set aside for the preventive maintenance funds. We are in a world of hurt for that. I mean, we're just trying to skim by until our ship comes in, which we hope it's coming in in, in a couple of years, right? Because one of the key things for taxes is, when you, when you have a building built, if it's not completed by January 1st, you don't get that money until clear a year and a half later because it's addressed, it's addressed the January 1st after it's completed. So our ship might be delayed just a little bit, you know? And, and that ship is actually kind of a small ship right now. It's not a really big ship. It's not gonna cover all the stuff we need. It's helping.
One could actually even argue that since we've got the sale of the one-time funds, we could justify and say that this is to replenish what we took and spent for the complex. Because we did take and dip into general funds to pay for the complex.
And we certainly got ramp funds to help.
Correct.
But to your point, I would not go up there and suggest that the council think about going up there and building a new building like a new fire station without basically putting on the ballot and moving that through a process with a bond.
For sure.
Because the bottom line's going to be is, is that Roy City does not have the amount of money to be able to pay for that. It'd have to bond for it and work through that process. So I think there's some solutions if we think this process through. But I'm just asking, and maybe the, really the comment that was made in public to simply, show me, if you're going to take $1.4 million out of my property tax, show me how you're going to spend it.
Great, we can, we can do that. We're gonna take that benchmark. And we're gonna take your information that you've done through that benchmark to finalize it. And the key is, our real-world survey is that we have lost 70% turnover. So that's like a super real-world survey. And we can look at what those are and that will balance it because we're not giving an equal amount. We're giving it in regards to where it's needed the most. And I think that's where the fundamental principle is because we need to make some steps forward until we, you have done so much work for us, Mayor, and we appreciate that so much. And we need to take that work and move it forward. We just need a little bit of an extension on that so we can get to that point and we need a little bit of that sustenance to get us there.
Just as long as you recognize the fact is, is that Public Works doesn't have to worry about most of this. Public Works has all the money they need sitting in the bank right now to do it. And the only reason why they haven't done it already is because they don't want one part of their organization to get a benefit and the rest of them don't. And so they don't do anything. But when you look at the Public Works and all the franchise, they got plenty. They can make all of this happen, don't have to do anything. So I, you know, all I can say to you, council, is, is that, is that it's what, what happens tonight and then what happens tomorrow is gonna make the difference of where we go from here. But Brian, I wanna make sure all the council have a moment. Anything else you wanna share?
Good luck.
Okay, good luck. Randy, you need, you have any comments?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Sophie, please.
I just think that the four years that I've been on the council, this is the first year that we dug into it early and I appreciate that. And that was all, I won't say you're doing, but it was, it was a early look into, into what's going on. Getting information from the residents and taking into consideration everything we've heard tonight, the majority of the people are for a tax increase. Surprised me a little bit. I figured we'd hear a few more no's than we, than not. But my other point, or my other concern, I'm, the $100,000 in the fund balance can be discussed. I think the $500,000, we have for four years been hashed over that decision. So I don't think I will ever do that again. And hashed by the mayor, I will not do that again. And that is very sad. I think there's a reason and a situation for every, for that, but not in this. Not in this.
Okay, thank you. Council, anything else? Ann, you had a couple of things I think that cut you off.
I think I'm good.
Anything else?
Is there, is there anything else we wanna discuss in regards to numbers? Or do we go ahead and, and stick with that proposal? When we take a look at it, you know, even that proposal is still a pretty minimal, minimal amount. But I, you know, I just wanna make sure everyone has a chance to, to review that as well.
Well, you're gonna have to make a determination because what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go for a motion to vote on three options. And based on the outcome of the vote, we'll decide if I get the majority on any one of them. And so I'll try to define it the best I can. Matt and Matt, help me to make sure that we're defining this for the record, okay? The first motion is basically going to address to approve the budget as written. And the budget as written will include a 9% property tax increase. That's what was proposed by Matt in the beginning. And that this motion is simply says, do you want to leave that as that is or not? And the vote will tell us whether or not we move forward. The second option, if I can't get a majority on the first vote, the second, the first option that Brian brought up would be is to take, correct me if I'm wrong, make sure we get this right, take and propose a 4.5% property tax increase. And then take $250,000 out of the fund balance to pay for the approval of the existing budget. And that gets us basically, actually the first option and this, and the first option and the first motion that I'm gonna have, the outcome is simply going to be is to get us to a balanced budget based on what Matt proposed back in May. The option two that was presented would basically says, we're gonna add an increase. What I've heard a couple of you say, it should be 28%. Is it gonna be any less than that?
Do we not get to make the motion or is that you making the motion?
I'm gonna make all the motions, but I wanna make sure we walk this process as I go through this to make sure I go through.
Mayor, it actually, you should just call for a motion and then they can state what the motion is.
Okay, but it's gonna get real confusing if I don't make this straight Okay, but it's going to get real confusing if I don't make this straight because they may not understand exactly what Brian was saying, and he's proposing, and they may or may not vote for that in large part because they just don't know the difference. And I wanted to make sure they understand going into this.
But it also doesn't prevent him from making a motion.
It certainly doesn't. And he could qualify his comments in option one if it's going to be different than 4.5. What he mentioned was 4.5. I just want to say, I'm just not sure about your option. So we'll explore that if we don't get a majority in the first two. So any other councilman's comments or questions before I go into a motion?
Nope.
Okay? Then here's the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year '26 budget as written to include a 9, excuse me, 9% property tax increase?
Mayor, just to clarify, what the proper, it would just be you calling for a motion, and then they would make the motion? Because rules of order...
Yeah, I'm calling for a motion to approve.
I understand, but I would let, I would just say, Council...
Give me a motion?
Is there a motion?
Yes. Now is that time for them to make that motion, and that's their prerogative.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, that's certainly a different way than I've done it before, but we can certainly try it. I'm going to ask you, Counsel, for a motion to approve, a motion to approve the budget as written. Do I have a motion then to approve?
Can I do a counter motion?
I'm going to get to you. But if I, here's how it works, Diane. If I don't get a motion to approve, I don't get nothing. It dies right there.
It does, but the proper way would just be calling for a motion or entertaining a motion at this time, not necessarily dictating what the motion is.
Okay. I really didn't want to do it that way, Matt, in large part because I think they need to be a little more structured. But we'll try it your way.
But that's the way, they are the ones that set the motion, right? And they make the motion, and then they would indicate what the options are in their motion, just similar as if you were doing it, but they were the one, they are the ones that make the motion.
Okay. Then do I have a motion then to approve Resolution 25-14?
I move to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 25-24 fiscal year budget with the following criteria. I propose a 28% tax increase using a 1.5% COLA, using 100,000 dollars of one-time land sale monies or fund monies for the urgent needs as described. Also, allowing the fire department to use wages of two or so positions to bolster wages of remaining positions as previously discussed. Allowing and encouraging other departments the same flexibility on condition the changes will be overseen and approved by the city manager to be certain all changes are feasible for each department. I also propose that it would be remaining money from that would go to the legislative budget to be used for employee wages through implementing the current benchmark salary and survey according to adjustments approved by the city manager to be implemented as soon as possible, as soon as they can make those determinations as necessary. Is that an appropriate motion? Would that be okay?
Yes.
I now have a motion. Do I have a second? This is a roll call vote. Brittany?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scannan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 25-24 is now approved, okay? With that, city manager and council report. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Weber County actually reached out to us, and they would like us to canvass the primary election by next Tuesday. That means that we need to hold a special city council meeting to canvas that. We've discussed it just a little bit. We have until next Tuesday night. We typically meet on Tuesday if that works, but that would be the last day possible. If that works for, at least, we have to have three council members there as well.
We need an answer. Is next Tuesday going to work for you at 5:30? It'll be a short meeting.
I'll be in Philadelphia. I can zoom in.
I'll be here.
We could do it. We have a 24-hour notice required as well.
The date of that is...
A week from today.
A week from today.
So that'd be the 25th?
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever the date is.
26, 26.
26?
May I please get back with you on that?
Right.
Yeah, we'll just notice it to...
We just need three of you. Sophie?
Yes.
You okay? Brian, good?
I don't know yet.
You don't know?
I'll check.
Okay, just put it on your calendar that it's a possibility. We have to canvas that day, or all of that primary stuff kind of goes bad on us. So Randy's indicating he thinks he can get to us from Philadelphia. We've got to have three of you, okay? So, okay, what else?
I've made mention of this before. Day of service is this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. Also, big date coming up of September 1st. That's the date that the, the last day, the Aquatic Center and the Splash Pad will be open for the season. And also, just a friendly reminder that the complex is closed until September 2nd for the annual maintenance, and that's all I have.
Is the day of service, even if it rains? Because there's forecast for rain. Okay.
Okay. And that is the 23rd at 9 o'clock, and I think there's, what'd you say, Michelle? We got like 12 stations, 12 areas within the city that will be working? Okay. Perfect. Anything else, Counsel?
Absolutely. I want to thank you very much, Mayor. You have helped lead us and guide us through a very difficult year. And I want to thank the council, and I'd like to thank the department heads, and I really would like to thank all of those citizens that have come and made their voices heard, their phone calls, their emails. This has been a very, very difficult project for us as city council members, and we appreciate all of your input very much, and thank you very much for that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sophie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending. Sorry it took so long, 10 o'clock. If it's worth anything, Weber County School District got out about 10:30, so...
That's magic.
You're allowing us to have such a good conversation even though we didn't agree on all of this.
I took so many notes. And remember, you almost started to open the door, and it was never open. And I had all these notes. 5700 south, that's been a problem for 20 years.
I just mind. Your mother-in-law, directing my phone call, she said she was watching. She was on her way to get it. Did she see him coming to get it?